Thank you for joining us this evening at our City Council meeting. This is pretty exciting to see everybody out here. What a great crowd. I love it. Thank you for being with us. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Johnston?
Here.
Surratt?
Here.
Manon?
Here.
Here. Thank you. If you'd please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you remain standing for the invocation which will be offered by Pastor Jacqueline Thomas from the Praise Temple of God.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. It is always a pleasure to be here. Can we please bow our heads? Oh gracious heavenly Father, we come this evening asking your blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live, work, and play. Help them as leaders to not ask first how do we fix this, but what do we need to learn? How might we need to change? And to whom do we need to listen? Remind them, because we all forget time to time, especially in the noisiness of what passes for political debate today, that they are not only leaders, but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all. Remind them that no matter where we live, everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic, Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, Sikh, or Antichrist, they are or might be our neighbors. To respect and protect the least of those among us, our children, the elderly, the poor, those who are hungry, those who have no homes, those who live on the margin, those who are alone, those who are forgotten, grant them in us the wisdom and courage to know and to do what is right and good and true. May they seek to speak when it is time to speak out and listen patiently and receptively. And when it's time to listen, may they, and we always be guided by the Spirit of our heavenly Father, by the Spirit of justice, and by the Spirit of love. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Three is a Consent Agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires any matter listed, can be moved to a separate agenda item. A. Minutes: Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification and regular council meeting of January 3, 2019, January 10, 2019, work session and executive session, and City Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting of January 17, 2019. B. Payroll and Material Claims: Council may wish to consider the payroll and material claims for the month of January 2019. Good evening, Joyce.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Joyce Stroshine, Chief Financial Officer for the City. Tonight I'm presenting the Payroll and Material Claims Report for January. Payroll and material claims totaled $7,114,279 for the month. Payroll-related claims, $3,625,158. And we had 667 employees at the end of the month, and we had changes in filled positions, an increase of two in the full-time status, a decrease of one in the half-time status, and a decrease of four in the part-time status, for an overall decrease of three positions. Bender claims totaled $3,489,121. I've highlighted large bender claims. Those are Davy Coach Sales Incorporated, $743,050. This was for the seven buses for transit. Construction Services Incorporated, $447,373. This is for Street. This is being paid by Street and Sanitation Equally. It's the Garrett Way Building Renovation. And then we have Metroquip Incorporated, $266,948. This is for WPC. It was a Kenworth ten-wheel semi-trailer tank. And the Street Department, the brine maker, and cover. RSCI, $126,000. WPC, this was another payment on the phosphorus design Phase II project. This report explains 88.11% of all vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, I give you the purchase card activity for the month. We had 981 transactions in the month of January totaling $217,758. We had 144 cardholders use their card this month. I've listed, we had three purchase agents who had monthly totals greater than $10,000, and I've listed a description of the types of expenditures for your review. This concludes my report. If there's any questions, I'll answer them now.
Council, any questions for Joyce? Looks good. Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you.
Let's move to C. Planning and Zoning Commission Appointment. Council may wish to confirm the Mayor's appointment of Richard Larson to serve as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, replacing Sean Hargreaves, who resigned. Mr. Larson's term will begin February 9, 2019, and will expire June 22, 2021. D. MOU Amendment to Collective Bargaining Agreement for Firefighters Local Union Number 187. Council may wish to approve the Memorandum of Understanding MOU, amending the October 6, 2016 Collective Bargaining Agreement for Firefighters Local Unit Number 187, the MOU Modified Article 16, Section F, changing the population date for Kelly Days from October 1 to January 1. E. Council Decision Vacation of Right-of-Way at 2771 Bannock Highway. Council may wish to adopt this decision vacating the public's interest in the right-of-way at 2771 Bannock Highway, subject to conditions. F. Council Decision Nils Bylow Sign Appeal of Hearing Examiner's Denial. Council may wish to adopt the decision approving the request from Nils Bylow Incorporated for an exception to install an electric message display and a new business sign on an existing 16-foot tall pole at 333 North 15th Avenue, with conditions. G. Council Decision Noblich Townhouse Subdivision Short Plat. Council may wish to adopt this decision approving a short plat for Noblich Townhouse Subdivision, which subdivides approximately .25 acres of land into two residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located at 1495 and 1497 East Cedar. H. Council Decision Acceptance Public Ownership of Surprise Valley Road Copper Creek Subdivision. Council may wish to adopt this decision, accepting the approvals on an extension of Surprise Valley Road Copper Creek Subdivision for public ownership and maintenance, subject to conditions. Council President, Johnston.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Johnston and a second by Cheatham. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda Item Four is Communications and Proclamations. We do not have any proclamations, and I am not seeing any scouts out there. If there's a scout out there, stand up or raise your hand or something. Nope, not seeing that. All right. They must have read the agenda today. We will move to Agenda Item Five is a Calendar Review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On February 14, at 9:00 a.m. will be a work session. February 21, at 3:00 p.m. will be a Council Liaison Work Session Clarification Meeting, a 5:30 p.m. clarification meeting, and at 6:00 p.m. a regular City Council meeting. Other events, the 41st Annual Simplot Games will be held at Holt Arena, February 14 to the 16th. Looking ahead, February 18, city offices will be closed for Presidents' Day. However, garbage and recycle pickups will remain on schedule. Comments regarding the proposed Ross Park Master Plan will be accepted until May 15. You may submit a comment to rossparkplan@pocatello.us. We will move to Agenda Item Six. The Public Hearing: Vacation of Right-of-Way 400 Block of Poole Avenue. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public concerning a request by Jonathan Vincent to vacate and abandon the public's interest in a portion of unused right-of-way in the 400 block of Poole Avenue. I declare the public hearing open. City Council, is there been any ex parte communication in regards to this? Okay, then I would ask the applicant to come on up and present for, you've got a few minutes, 10 minutes, to present your side, what you would like us to do here.
So I am Jonathan Vincent, and I have purchased a piece of property on McKinley. Originally, when I made the offer on the property, there's a 1-point acre parcel, and there's another little parcel behind the 1.8-acre parcel. And when I made the offer, I actually didn't realize that there was a piece of Poole Avenue on the 400 block that wasn't vacated. When I made the offer, I assumed it was all connected. This was actually brought to my attention by the title company. So at that time, I contacted the city, and the city, I think at the time, actually wasn't aware that that 400 block of Poole wasn't vacated either. So we did some research, and sure enough, it had not been vacated. And it looks like actually half of it had been vacated at one point. So only 25 feet of it hasn't been vacated. The east half of it had been vacated. So what I'm requesting is the portion between my two parcels that I purchased, which is 25 feet by 73 feet, be vacated, because at this point, purchasing the two parcels are isolated, so the one parcel's landlocked, which makes it, you know, pretty much useless. So that's what I'm petitioning, is only the piece of land between my two parcels be vacated, which comes up to about 1,825 square feet, 73 feet by 25 feet. So that's my fill-out application, and I'm petitioning that that little piece of ground be vacated, so I can use the whole parcels.
Any questions for Jonathan while he's up here? So you're telling me half of that parcel had been vacated before, but you're just requesting the other half of this?
Yeah, so there's developments on both sides of the 400 block, and at some points, both those developments had had Poole Street vacated, and I don't know if at that point that portion of it had been vacated. But right now, if you look at the map, I think it was 50 feet wide at one point, but only 25 feet of it is left, so it's really kind of fragmented.
Okay.
So what's left is, I think it's 370-something feet long by 25 feet. So there's half. It's just the west side of Poole Street that's left, and I'm just asking for my little portion, which is 73 feet by 25 feet.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. Matthew Lewis, Senior Planner with Plant City. Mr. Vincent entered into a real estate purchase/sale agreement to purchase a total of 2.2 acres of land located in 400 block McKinley Avenue. The description included a 1.8 acre parcel described in meets and bounds, the east one half of Lot 1, Janus Subdivision totaling 10,280 square feet, and a platted right-of-way referred to as Poole Avenue totaling 8,284.25 square feet in area. Appkin submitted a building permit for construction of six fourplexes. Staff research found no evidence of Poole Avenue being vacated, and consequently contacted the applicant regarding the need to vacate the portion of Poole Avenue, which buds and also provides access to the east half of Lot 1, Janus Subdivision. Appkin is requesting that the 1,825 square feet area of Poole Avenue be vacated and combined with the subject parcels. The combined land will encompass two acres, which is the minimum required to allow construction of six fourplex units. Staff finds that the proposal is compliant with all applicable standards under Council Resolution 2016-11. A complete legal description of the area requested for vacation was reviewed by city staff, of which a copy is provided in the file. A site map of the area proposed for vacation was provided by the Appkin and is included with this report. Notification by certified mail to property owners within a 300-foot radius of the subject property has been accomplished according to the signed mailing list affidavit submitted by the Appkin. No comments were received regarding the application. Property owner residing at 374 Richland Avenue did explain to staff irrigation canal extended across the 1.8 acre parcel. This information was brought to the attention of Mr. Vincent, and as such, has no impact on the application before you. This concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Matt? Thank you, Matt. Have we had any, Matt, before you leave, have we had any correspondence? Have you received any correspondence?
I haven't.
Okay. Have we received any in the clerk's office?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any testimony uncommitted to the application. Any testimony opposed to the application? What?
There's someone out there.
Nope, uncommitted.
Are you uncommitted, sir? Come on up here. I'm glad you saw his hand.
Basically, a question for the city. I talked to Fort Hall the other day.
So, sir, if you had mentioned, put your name, and if you're from Pocatello, wherever you're from, and then also you want to write it down on the sheet there.
My name is Tom Scott. I live on Richland Avenue, which is in association with this. The question I have for the city, I talked to Fort Hall. Fort Hall told me that you, the city, told them that you would not issue a building permit to the developer unless you retained and restored the Gee Water District ditches.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that the only question you got?
That is the only question I have.
Okay. Well, we'll get an answer to that here in a minute then. Thank you. Okay. Any others uncommitted to the application? Any of those opposed to the application? Okay. Then I would actually, the applicant, you have an opportunity to come up and rebuttal anything that was just said, but it sounds like we need city staff, not you, unless you know something about it.
About the Gee Water District?
Yeah.
I can make a comment.
Okay. Come on over here if you would, please, and then Matt will get you up. Go ahead.
So I did spend some time out there with one of the neighbors on Richland, who the majority of the water, that I am going to be burying that section of canal along McKinley. And I did spend some time with one of the members of the Gee Water Districts, again to be getting a good fair share of that water, and try to develop design that's going to work really well with them. But I don't know if this answers this gentleman's name, but I'm going to try to do it in a way that tries to, because I know the last developer, when they're just going to push in some ditches and didn't do it right, and I'm going to try to do it in a way and work with, so the guy that's a water master now is in very good health, so I met with his daughter, and as well as the neighbors, seeing me get in the water, I'm going to be working with both of them to try to develop a design that works really well, so that the water system's going to work and function properly.
Okay.
So I don't know if that answers the question, but I've tried to meet with the neighbors, and we're going to try to do the system as best as possible.
Okay. Super. Thank you. Matt, you want to?
Mayor, councilmembers. Yeah, so when it's brought to the attention of Mr. Vincent, he, I believe, with the title report showed that there was an irrigation canal cross there. He's been doing his due diligence in that respect. And as far as the building permit, I think it just basically was, please do your due diligence as far as finding out and doing whatever you need to do for the irrigation canal there before you grade it. So the city doesn't get involved with the irrigation portion of it. Simply, we wanted to make sure that it was, like, brought to their attention.
So we didn't tell Fort Hall that we wouldn't give a building permit without that?
It's actually, it's actually gee, is it?
Gee?
It's just G-E-E.
Gee irrigation. And it was, it's just a, what do I want to say, a condition on the building permit that alerted the applicant of that fact. And so he, as applicant, has to do his due diligence to work with the irrigation.
It sounds like he's doing that, and everything is good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Then I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, these items before you. How do you wish to proceed? Councilwoman Adamson.
Mayor, I move that we approve the request.
Second. We have a motion by Adamson and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Surratt? Yes.
Thank you. Move to Agenda Item Number Seven is Public Hearing Vacant Land Located North of East Chubbick Road and West of Olympus Drive. This time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a zoning map amendment request by Nathan Wells of Portnough Development LLC, represented by Chris Adams of Creek Hollow and Associates Incorporated. The rezone, two parcels, or two rezone, two parcels of vacant land located north of East Chubbick Road and west of Olympus Drive from commercial general and residential medium-density single-family to residential commercial professional, a comprehensive plan land use map change from commercial residential to public, and public to mixed use is also proposed at this time. A previous public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission was held, where they recommend approval of this request. I declare the public hearing open. Counsel, is there any ex parte communication that is taken on this matter?
Mr. Mayor, I will recuse myself from discussion and voting on this item.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. My name's Chris Adams. I'm with Creek Hollow and Associates. My office address is 611 Wilton Avenue, Suite 1A, and I'm here representing Portnough Development and I guess Nathan Wells, who's a member of Portnough Development, in a request for a comprehensive plan map amendment, as well as a request for a rezone. The amendment to the comprehensive plan, as stated in your packet, is to change the current use from residential and commercial to a mixed use, mixed use use, mixed use capacity on your comprehensive plan, and then follow that up with a request for a rezone of those, that particular area. There's approximately 32.4 acres that's currently zoned RMS, and 5.95 acres that's zoned commercial general, and we propose that we change that zoning to RCP. And just briefly, and just to kind of go over some points of, I guess, interest, or address some of the points that were asked in our packet. The proposed zoning and comprehensive plan map would be beneficial to the community by providing much-needed high-density housing and mixed-use ability that the RMS zone and commercial zone currently limits. The zoning will lend to diversity and allow varying densities of residential and commercial and professional development. The zones west and east of the area that we're proposing is currently RCP, and the zone north is commercial general, and this rezone will fill in the gap between those two zones and allow that continued zoning to, throughout the south and west portions of the development. The area that we're proposing is one of our flatter areas of that North Gate development, and would lend very well for this higher intensity of proposed zoning. The proposed zoning district would be adequately served by public facilities by providing future streets to connect the public to these areas, simplify traffic movement, and maintain the pedestrian connection that comes from the wellness center. There's already sewer services in the area that, and to be extended and are extended to this RCP, or proposed RCP zone, and likewise with the water as well. And there's plenty of open space to the north of this area and through that bowl area to deal with the stormwater retention. The proposed zoning designation is consistent with the comprehensive plan land use map, and the surrounding areas are zoned the same as the proposed zone change. The request for the comprehensive plan change is to match the current zoning of the surrounding zones and better suit the compatibility of the development needs which the mixed use will provide. Overall field and goal of the development is to have that intermixed use of residential and commercial and professional, and to better provide a live here, entertain here, and shop here feel. That's my presentation.
Any questions for Chris?
You talked about high-density residential. You're talking apartments, condos. What's in the mix?
Yeah, so more of a, more of that type of, but it, so condos, high-density homes, apartment-type. high-density homes, apartment-type complexes, as well as it lends for, um, residential, so it could be single-family homes as well in there, um, and some businesses, commercial business to be intermixed. So it's just not, the RMS zone is just residential only through that area currently. And, um, the zone to the east, which is from Olympus Drive, which has been just newly extended, uh, moving west, there's a large area that's already RCP. Then we have, if you look on the, there's a map in your packet. It's partway back it. You can see that picture there. Right through the middle is where, is the area that we're proposing. There's RCP on this side, and all of this is RCP, and then all this on the north is commercial, and it's basically proposing that all of this just follow suit and just be changed to RCP, just to lend for more flexibility, um, as, uh, potential, um, clients and things that come interested that it just lends for their, a little bit more diversity, what they can do in that area. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Mr. Cheatham?
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. My name is Carl Anderson, City of Pocatello Planning Department, for the record. As noted in the agenda and detailed by the applicant, the request is a zoning map and comprehensive plan land use map amendment, application to rezone the subject property from the existing residential medium-density single-family in a section of commercial general to residential, commercial, professional. The proposed zone change requires a concurrent amendment to the comprehensive plan land use map to mixed use from the current residential and commercial designation. The subject property is to be rezoned includes thirty-two point four acres of RMS zoning and five point nine five acres of CG, commercial general, more or less. Located within the recent North Gate annexation, north of Chubbick Road and west of Olympus Drive. In addition to the requests being considered, staff is, has advised at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that the public lands designation on the comprehensive plan, uh, twenty-one point oh-four acres more or less, also be amended to, at this time, to be consistent with the existing, uh, RCP zoning. That is to say that the zoning overlaying that designation is already residential, commercial, professional, and we're recommending that the plan be, the comp plan be amended to match that. All notice requirements have been met. No public comment has been received at this time. In consideration of the application proposed development, staff concludes that the proposed zoning map amendment and comprehensive plan land use map amendment are compliant with Pocatello Municipal Code seventeen oh-two one eighty and seventeen oh-two one twenty and will not create any nonconformities of developments approved to date. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on the subject application on January ninth, where the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the request to amend the zone map and corresponding comprehensive plan land use with the conditions listed in the attached findings of fact. The council may wish to adopt the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation to approve the applicant's request to amend the zone map and corresponding comprehensive plan land use map with the conditions listed in the attached findings of fact. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Questions for Carl? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Carl, has there been any correspondence that we have not received?
Uh, no.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Then I would look for any testimony supporting the application. Any of those uncommitted to the application? Any testimony of those opposed to the application? Okay, well, Chris, you would have something to rebut if there was anything to rebut. Do you have anything else to say to us?
Okay.
All right. Then I declare the public hearing closed. Counsel, this item is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Manon.
I, I move that we approve agenda item number seven with the rezone of the property and amend the comprehensive land map with, with the conditions.
I second.
We have a motion by Manon and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Manon?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Oh, he's refused. Thank you. We'll move to agenda item eight. Agenda item eight, water connection request Samuel Street. Counsel may wish to consider a request from Chris and Katie Taylor to connect a parcel of land east of Stockman Road, which will have the, have a Samuel address once assigned to the city's water system to allow construction of a home. The utility connection annexation covenant has been completed and all connection fees have been paid. Outside-city utility rates will be assessed until property is annexed.
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve, uh, the action requested on this water connection request, subject to any legal things that need to be done.
Thank you. We have a motion by Council President Johnston and a second by Manon. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine, piggyback bid for sanitation carts. Counsel may wish to accept the recommendations of staff and award the piggyback bid for a truckload of, truckload quantity of ninety-five gallon trash recycle yard waste carts to rehear Pacific Company, and if accepted, authorize the mayor to sign documents related to the bid. The cart cost includes delivery. Our trash carts, forty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents each, recycle carts, fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents each, and yard waste carts, fifty-one dollars and ninety-five cents each. Funds are allocated in the sanitation department's fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget to purchase the carts. Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept these piggyback bids and authorize you to sign documents related to the bid.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. You got beat out.
Sorry.
Gotta be quicker than that. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item number ten, two thousand nineteen Water Department material bid. Counsel may wish to consider bids received on January seventeen, two thousand nineteen for materials used by the Water Department for capital improvement project and replenishing inventory. The bids, the bid was separated into thirteen separate lots in an effort to guarantee the lowest price for the city. Staff request that counsel award each lot to the lowest responsive bidder as follows. A, Core and Main LP, lots three, five, eleven, and thirteen, total, total bid sixty-three thousand, twenty dollars and thirty-three cents. B, Ferguson Water Works, lot two, six, seven, eight, and nine, total bid fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty cents, and C, H Flower Corporation, or Corporation lots one, four, ten, and twelve, total bid four hundred and forty thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-five cents. Total cost for the material bids is five hundred and fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Funds are available in the Water Department's fiscal year two thousand nineteen budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Bray?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the lots as identified by none, uh, the letters A, B, and C, for a total of fifty, five thou, five hundred thousand, five fifty, five hundred fifty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Second.
Johnston, you disappointed me.
I know, I know. I saw you were ready.
My goodness, we have a motion by President, by Bray and a second by Johnston, with a little bit of disappointment from the mayor on Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item eleven, fiber line installation contract airport. Counsel may wish to approve a contract with Red Communications in the amount of forty thousand dollars to install a fiber line between the city's water pollution control facility and the Pocatello Airport. Authorize the mayor's signature on documents related to the contract, subject to legal department review or approval. Funds for installation are available in the city's emergency repair fund.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Cheatham?
I'd like to move to approve agenda item number eleven, subject to legal department approval.
Councilmember, can you make that contingent on necessary easements being obtained?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
All right. I move we approve agenda item number eleven, fiber line installation contract to the airport. Authorize the mayor's signature on documents related, subject to legal department approval, and the granting of easements necessary to make that happen.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Manon.
Who's Lady Gunk for that?
No, she's not going for anything now. You beat her out last time. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item twelve, TO, TO Engineers Professional Services Agreement Airport Improvement Projects. Counsel may wish to approve and authorize the mayor, the mayor to sign a professional services agreement between the city and TO Engineers for design and billing and bidding of this year's airport improvement project, program projects, which include rehabilitation FBO apron, construction apron, uh, hard stand upgrade, electrical vault, and repackaged north taxiway A and terminal apron design. The fee is not to exceed a hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and is eligible for a ninety-three point seven-five percent reimbursement from the FAA, with the remaining six point two-five percent funded using airport passenger facility charge funds. The project is contingent upon grant award. Councilwoman Adamson?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agreement contingent upon receipt of the grant.
Thank you.
Second.
And a second by Lurick. We've got a motion by Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item thirteen, crash alarm system replacement airport. Counsel may wish to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a construction agreement and notice of award between the city and System Tech Incorporated for replacement of the airport crash alarm system. The contract price is a hundred and twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars, with a total contract time of a hundred and sixty-one days. Funding for the project will be ninety-three point seven-five percent from budgeted federal grant funds and six point two-five percent from passenger facility charges. The notice of award is contingent upon FAA approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Lurick?
I move that we approve and authorize the mayor to sign a construction agreement and notice of award between the city and System Tech Inc. for replacement of the airport crash alarm system.
Second.
Thank you. Think it's important to know if something happens out there. Connie, could you, oh, I'm sorry, we have a, a motion by Lurick and a second by Bray. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item fourteen A is an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code five point zero six, commercial activities in parks and other public places, as presented to the council in, at the December thirteen, two thousand eighteen work session, providing guidelines and regulations regarding commercial, for-profit use of city-owned taxpayer-supported facilities. Counsel, how would you wish to have this read?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we use option one, one reading under rules of suspension. Therefore, I move the ordinance agenda item number fourteen be read only by title and place for final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Yeah, fourteen A?
Fourteen A.
Thank you.
A second.
We have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Councilwoman Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho revising Title V, Chapter Six, Commercial Activities in Parks and Other Public Places. Of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, more particularly by amending sections five point zero six point zero one zero definitions, five point zero six point zero two zero applicability, five point zero six point zero three zero license required, five point zero six point zero four zero license application, and five point zero six point zero six zero conditions of licensure. By adding a new section, five point zero six point zero three five, commercial photography and video recording, providing that all other sections of chapter, of chapter five point zero six shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its pass, its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item fourteen B, an ordinance amending Pocatello Municipal Code twelve point three six, public parks, as presented to the council at the December thirteen, two thousand eighteen work session, providing guidelines and regulations regarding commercial, for-profit use of city-owned taxpayer-supported facilities. Counsel, how would you like, do wish this ordinance to be read?
Mr. Mayor?
Bray?
I move that ordinance, agenda item number fourteen B, be read only by title and place on final passage for publication, and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Johnston. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Johnston?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Jared, could you please read the ordinance?
An ordinance of the city of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho revising Title twelve, Chapter thirty-six, public parks of the revised and compiled ordinances of the city of Pocatello, more particularly by adding new sections, twelve point three six point zero two seven, ongoing commercial, for-profit use of city facilities, twelve point three six point zero two eight, contracted programs and services, and twelve point three six point one one five, additional garbage and/or restroom capacity, providing that all other sections of Chapter twelve point three six shall remain in full force and effect, providing that this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage, approval, and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
No.
Johnston?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item fifteen, discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the start of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, there is a three-minute time limit per person and fifteen minutes total for this agenda item. We have two that have signed in. Jolene Anderson, you have signed in to speak on the Aid for Friends, which will be a public hearing next, and so we will wait to hear your comments then. Andy Moldenhauer.
Mayor and council, Andy Moldenhauer, president of Pocatello Firefighters Local One Eighty Seven. I just wanted to let you guys know, we've, we've talked several times about the Seattle stair climb that's coming up. We're gonna be doing our annual fundraiser for that tomorrow at Fred Meyer from ten in the morning until five PM, and we'll have people there. And before you ask me, Councilman Cheatham, um, the guys that will be there climbing the stairs will be there off duty.
You've been asked that question before, huh?
Yeah, yeah, well, every time that I get up here, Rick likes to ask me that. Anyway, we will see you next week, because we're on your agenda for work session next week, and I wanted to just briefly thank you guys for passing that MOU so that we can move forward with that and improve our relations.
Perfect. I have a question for you. If somebody wants, Jim, for example, wants to come and do the stair climb, are you gonna charge him five bucks to do so, or what are you gonna do?
You know, Jim's just gonna, we'll, we'll just let him do it for free, just for the fun of having him upstairs and let everybody see him up there.
Well, I have to get him. Well, I have to get him down, no?
Do I have to? I think, yeah, you might have to pay to get off.
It's free to get on, you can't get off unless you pay.
You have a pair of turn offs a little bit.
You know, if you'd like to, if you'd like to do it, you can find some. In fact, but if any of you would like to do it and you'd like to wear turn outs, then let me know because we'll have to, we'll have to arrange to do that prior.
So we have an audience here, and I want to invite anybody and everybody in the audience to go to Fred Meyer's tomorrow, put on the firefighter suit with the air mask, right?
Well, so this is the one where we do it and we have somebody on the stair mill the entire time, just, and the public just, it's just to raise awareness so the public will donate money to it.
All right. Let me rephrase that. Everybody in the audience, go to Fred Meyer tomorrow, 10 to 5. Donate money, watch the firefighters do a stair climb thing, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
To pay was a few weeks ago at Gold.
Yes, that was at Gold.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we have no other, no one else signed up for Agenda Item 15, so we will move to Agenda Item 16, is a public hearing request, 209 East Lewis, reconsideration of hearing examiner's approval to allow transitional housing. This time is, this time has been set aside for council to hear comments from the public regarding a reconsideration request for a conditional use permit that was approved by the hearing examiner on December 13, 2018. The appellant is Gypsy Holdings LLC, represented by Racine Olson, PLLP. The original request was from Idaho Housing and Finance Association, represented by BJ Stenzland of Aid for Friends, for a conditional use permit to allow transitional housing and associated administrative offices at 209 East Lewis Street. I declare the public hearing open. Council, has anyone had expert communication or contact with? Okay? Then I would ask the appellant, which is Racine Olson. And I would remind you that you have 10 minutes to give us a presentation. When it gets to three minutes, that will start to blink, your little timer over here.
Okay.
All right.
Mayor, City Council, my name is Fred Lewis. I'm a partner at the law firm of Racine Olson located at 201 East Center Street in Pocatello, Idaho. We are right across the street from the proposed homeless location. I'm here representing Gypsy Holdings LLC and also, and the other LLC is owned by Matt Spencer. I'm all Houston, we're here representing Hanson Janitorial Supply. First thing I wanted to say is that we really do appreciate the work that has been done by Aid for Friends for the homeless in the city of Pocatello. We applaud them and we wish them continued success. But we oppose the current location. We think it's a good idea. Pocatello probably needs that homeless shelter, but it's just in the wrong location. First of all, what doesn't matter in a conditional use permit? What doesn't matter is whether Aid for Friends needs to expand, whether the proposed shelter is, location is the best and the most ideal location for them. What does matter? What does matter is that an applicant for a conditional use permit is not entitled to receive the approval of that application just because they filed an application. Conditional use permits are approved only if an applicant can meet all seven requirements set forth in the city code that I have there on the screen. Two that I want to focus on, and what our argument is really focused on, and that is, is it compatible with the existing or permitted land uses? And then second, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? Now, what's the secret to the success of Old Town Pocatello's redevelopment? We believe it is a strong relationship between, in cooperation between the city, Old Town, Inc., and also the local entrepreneurs who invest their hard-earned money into these projects. Just a brief history, Old Town, Inc. came to be in 1990. One, when a group of merchants and business people in downtown Pocatello petitioned the city to pass a business improvement district. Now, this is a kind of a unique, it's kind of a unique taxing procedure that can be used where you can take money in and then use it to create, beautify, and create better infrastructure in the downtown area, and that's what they did. So this has been a 27-year success story, and there's been over $31 million invested in Old Town Idaho. 14 million by private investors like my client, Matt Spencer, and then 14, excuse me, 17 million by the city. Now, Matt is a, is one of these folks that you've encouraged. He's bought five buildings. There's been a write-up on, about him in the Idaho State Journal. One that you're probably really familiar with is the Office Bar and Grill, and he's now renovating the Shanghai Restaurant. So $2 million invested, 23 employees, 10 to soon be added. That's what the office bar used to look like. That is what it looks like now. That is redevelopment, that is revitalization. This Business Improvement District is this area here, this red crosshatch, and I'll see if I can show you. So it extends both on the west side of the underpass and then also on the east side. And the, that area right there, the black dot right there, that's the proposed location of the homeless shelter. To put it in perspective, it's from where I'm standing, from the business district to those doors. That's where the homeless shelter is being proposed, in the location. So as we look at the compatibility, the proposed use, the zoning ordinance is specifically required that it has to be compatible with existing and permitted uses in the general area. Now, what's the existing use? It's the crown jewel of Pocatello. It's Old Town Pocatello. It's the future of Pocatello. And why do I say that? Because our clients who move in with their businesses, they want amenities like this to bring in their employees and to show them. So it is a really important part of Pocatello. The new use, we just believe, is not a good fit. It's too close, in fact, like I say, right across the street, that far away from the Business Improvement District. They want to put a large homeless shelter in Old Town. We estimate their current facility is 3,000 to 4,000 square feet. The current, the proposed location will be 16,000 square feet. But what are the problems that we currently have at the Aid for Friends homeless shelter? We have 200, we pulled all the police records, there's 201 police visits since January of 2017. 25 investigations for violent disturbances, 14 investigations for assault and battery. They included sexual assault and also assault with a deadly weapon. There have been nine arrests there per year, and there have been multiple events that are not covered by these with surrounding neighbors. It's the same story in Spokane with their homeless shelter that's in downtown area. The crime rate increases. So different stories, I mean, different cities, same story. You're going to hear testimony from Bruce Hanson. There's a test about what he's seen at his location in Boise. He also owns a location here in Pocatello. Clean Texas, homeless residents are scaring off customers. Corvallis, Oregon, Albuquerque, and Salt Lake City is now closing down their downtown homeless shelter. Well, so we believe a shelter is just incompatible with a retail business district. The homeless shelters destroy walkable retail business districts. They cannot live side by side and coexist with retail business districts. That's what, that's what the research shows, and we provided those articles to you. So based upon this factor alone, we believe that the conditional use permit should be denied. The second factor is the comprehensive plan. Now, what is the most relevant portion of the comprehensive plan? We believe that it's the economic development chapter in Chapter 4. Now, there's, there are five pages of goals and objectives, and I believe there are three, essentially three takeaways from that, those goals and objectives, about 25 of them. But what the message from the comprehensive plan is, is that the zoning is to provide a business-friendly environment that creates a supportive environment for local entrepreneurs. It's to encourage development and of a walkable retail shopping district. It's to encourage redevelopment and the established uses of, in the Old Town area. Placing a large homeless shelter right across the street from this Business Improvement District, we believe is the wrong choice. Now, and it just, it does not create a business-friendly environment. And Aid for Friends has submitted no evidence that the proposed shelter is consistent with those goals. And remember, it's not the new use is where the scrutiny comes, it is the existing use. How do you affect those who have already invested millions and millions of dollars, their hard-earned money, into these businesses and, you know, are trying to keep their businesses alive? So we believe that's the second reason why the conditional use permit should be denied. So in summary, good idea, wrong location. It's just inconsistent and with existing uses, and it also is inconsistent with the economic development chapter of the comprehensive plan. The ultimate effect on the proposed homeless shelter is going to end the success story. We really believe that. We would not be here, we would not be.
Thank you. Any questions for Fred while he's up there? Thank you.
Well, I have a couple. I noticed that you went to number four in the overview of what we should be doing, the long-range plan, so to speak. When I, and you say it's most applicable, but you conveniently ignored several of them that were also listed. Chapter 8, Goal 7, Chapter 12, Goal 8, 5. There are several of those mentioned in the staff report. Your perspective is the economic development overrides our, our relationship with HUD and our community development in terms of housing and stuff like that. How do you make that assessment, the economic development, without caring for people in terms of housing, particularly homeless?
Well, what we think is that the comprehensive plan kind of sorts the priorities, and if you have, which is the only, and I'll point this out again, the only business improvement district in the entire city is right across the street, okay? So that's what we think, as you look at it, and we're not saying that there is no place that this homeless shelter shouldn't be built. We're just saying that as you try to encourage economic development, that that has to be the preeminent reason, and there are other locations, in their current location, they're doing fine. They want to expand, there are other locations, there's six other locations that they have explored. And so as you balance, you know, what is, that's good. They have other alternatives, okay? But we know through city after city after city after city that you bring a homeless shelter into the downtown area, it chases off the retail businesses. That's just what happens. And, you know, so we believe that, that we can have both, okay? We can have a new homeless shelter, just not across the street from the Business Improvement District. That's why we think that the economic development chapter should be the focus because this is a special part of Pocatello.
Could you tell me what part of Pocatello isn't special?
I mean, this is a beautiful city. Obviously, when I came here 30 years ago and I'm still here.
Yeah, but you're implying this is more special than other areas. We've already had two public hearings where neighborhoods said they were special. So what part of Pocatello isn't special?
Well, we know there, like I said, there's six other locations that they could place this homeless shelter.
They could attempt.
They, yeah, I mean, they, they're viable, other locations. But once again, the focus is not on the need for the homeless shelter. The focus is really on, are we protecting the existing uses of the property? That's what the preeminent analysis is. They are the ones that have the burden of proof. The Aid for Friends with their application of their conditional use permit, remember, this is not just a permitted use where you just get a building permit and away you go, right? There is some scrutiny here, and why is there scrutiny? Because this is a specific use that needs to be thought about carefully, and so that we need to balance the economic development with the need for this homeless shelter. And like I said, there's so many other places it could go, and then everybody's happy. I mean, obviously, you haven't heard anybody object to where they're currently at, right? So, I mean, they could expand there, I mean, there's all kinds of alternatives. This is not the only place in Pocatello for this homeless shelter.
Any other questions while Fred's there? Thank you.
Thank you.
The original applicant, BJ.
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Could you actually say that again, Roger? It sounded good coming from you, you're right.
I thought Hanson was going to follow up.
Oh, yeah.
Because he's representing local.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor.
BJ, I'm going to remind you, you have 10 minutes.
Only 10?
At seven minutes, that will turn on.
I know, I know. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council. It's nice to see you again. My name is BJ Stenzland. I'm the Executive Director at Aid for Friends. We have our admin offices, which are at 210 East Center, and our current shelter is at 653 South Ford. I want to make just a quick comment about, many of us are so comfortable using labels to describe people, and that's whether she's a pillar of our society, he's an outstanding citizen, they're well-to-do, or they're, he's a little down and out. Maybe she's an outcast, they're all bums and lowlifes. People are more complex than the labels we put on them. People that come to the shelter come only because at that given point in time, they don't have a home. The only one common denominator is that they don't have resources and, and it's a big and, and any support system. Aid for Friends becomes that support system for them, and we do it without judgment. In a letter that was submitted along with the appellate's application was a statement that I would like to read. Understandable emotional impulses to help the homeless cannot control the outcome here. I agree with that, and I want to expand it to say understandable impulses such as fear, discomfort, stigma, prejudice, and labeling cannot. discomfort, stigma, prejudice, and labeling, cannot control the outcome here. We submitted an application, it was reviewed by the, the city, we went through the process, and the hearing examiner, Kiva Schropshire, approved our conditional use permit because we met all seven of the criteria. I wish you'd started that on 10, then I'd know exactly how much time I have. Oh, I've got a watch. Okay, I've only been talking for 30 seconds. I want to go over quickly those areas that we did comply. The first of the, the seven criteria is dealing with zoning. The truth is, there's only two zoning areas in this entire wonderful community, city, that allows for a homeless shelter. They call it transitional housing, but then they describe it, and it's really homeless shelters and temporary housing under 30 days. And some of our clients stay longer, but some stay less. So there is commercial general. Any commercial general location here in Pocatello is going to have businesses. And the other location is called central commercial. Well, that goes right down the center of Old Town. So as much as I appreciate the, the business improvement district, that's right down where we're allowed to have shelters with conditional use permits. So we met that criteria. The second one, and I do believe it was challenged, was our comprehensive plan. Absolutely, we have met that. I think Roger mentioned, there's 15 different categories that encompass the, the comprehensive plan. I'm going to go over the ones that we, in our proposal, support and, and meet. Chapter 8, Public Services. Goal 7 is Health and Welfare Services that promote the provision of health and welfare services by qualified agencies and entities within the community. Objective 7.1, Support Programs That Provide For The Needs Of People Within The Community During Times Of Distress, Including Shelter, Safety, Nourishment, And Counseling. And I love your policy. Provide A Compassionate Environment For Agencies And Entities That Provide Needed Services To The Community. We also meet Chapter 7, Housing. Goal 5, Support Public Private Entities And Programs That Provide Emergency Shelter And Support Services For Domestic, Victims Of Domestic Violence, Substance Abuse Recovery, And The Homeless. Objective Under That Is Work With Agencies And Entities To Maintain An Adequate Supply Of Quality Shelter Facilities And Transitional Housing. The Policy Continue To Support Legitimate Programs That Provide Needed Facilities And Services. And then I got into the comprehensive plan. I thought, well, that, Chapter 4, Economic Development, I better look into it. I would like to add that we even fit there. And that is Goal 2. Promote Employment And Growth Development And Diversification Of The City And Regional Economies. The Objective 2.2. Promote And Encourage The Expansion, Retention Of Existing Businesses. Aid for Friends Is A Business That Has Been In Pocatello For 35 Years. We Will Be Able To Not Only Hire More Staff, But We're Also Going To Be Able To Provide Training And A Workforce Development Center So The People Staying At The Shelter Have Better Access To Those Services To Get Jobs. All right. Then, okay, this is the next one. Is It Compatible With Existing And Permitted Land Uses Within The General Area? Well, in my application, I identified the different businesses. There's lumber yards, there's a pet lodge, there's upholstery, there's two law firms, there's a food bank, there's housing right next door, affordable housing with 10, 11 units. So we're right there. We have a couple of bars, we have some restaurants. We have a very diverse current existing businesses. But what I find most interesting is, within this specific area, we have five nonprofits. May I come forward and hand these out?
Sure, you have a minute and 30 seconds though, so.
Oh, no, I have a minute 30.
That's what I said.
Okay. You stop that on, don't do that, because I've got a lot to go through. Please look, we have five nonprofits. We do meet the existing businesses. We have other services, there's mental health services, there's hope and recovery. We are right where we need to be. Okay, with a minute left, I'm not going to go through the other issues, except to say that we also have to comply with HUD requirements. And while we're looking for a place, by the way, we could only get one place for a conditional use permit, because we had to have an offer secured. But HUD says, all housing sites must be accessible to social, recreational, educational, commercial, and health facilities and services. This spot does it. The sides, the property will make it so that we can be on one floor, have handicap accessibility, be ADA compliant. We will be able to do a lot. And, in 24 seconds, we're, we're investing. We have community funders that are investing in this property that was vacant for two years plus, to the point of 1.6 to 1.8. We don't have the final estimates yet. That's going to be an improvement, right there, in that beautiful downtown area. I think it fits very, very well.
Thank you.
Got you first.
I think I gave you an extra second here.
I don't think so. I have so much more.
Don't go anywhere, don't go anywhere.
Okay. I had more, just say.
We have questions for BJ.
Okay.
Since you didn't have time to get to this, I was just, wanted to ask you about the current location. Mr. Lewis said several times that you could expand there. Is that even possible?
Absolutely not. If you've ever gone by, we have a, Benny County has been gracious enough to let us use, it was originally a residential house. It's three stories, a basement, main floor. There is not much room in that lot. We can barely put in a playground. And this new place has yards, it's safe, it's not on the main street. And there is no way to expand on the current property in any way. It is made of wood, folks, and it's overcrowded right now. Way overcrowded. And I know that's not a consideration, but we need to have a larger place.
So, any other questions? President Austin.
BJ, do any of your visitors come to your administrative offices at 210 East?
So many, you would not believe. We have an office just to help Region 5 do access kind of assessments, it's called an access point. So every day, they're coming in, many are homeless, many are at risk of being homeless. They come in for these assessments so that we can get them into housing, see what's out in the community that we can do. The Portonoff Interfaith Fellowship, also, we provide, we're kind of the overseer of their funds and monitor it, so, kind of a clearinghouse for that assistance. We have a lot of people, and no one really even notices that they're there. No one's complained that there's homeless walking into our office.
Could you give me a breakdown in terms of the percentages of families as contrasted with single men or single women?
I can. I can tell you what it was like last week, because that's really right up here in my brain. We had 20 single men on the-
Out of the total population?
Okay, we're talking about 61. Let's see if I can do my math. We had 20 single men. On the family floor, which includes couples, single women, and parents or guardians, there were 21 adults. There were 20 children. So that's an even split. You know, we had families, we had couples on the main floor, that's 2/3 compared to our single men. Normally, it's around 32, and I just had these numbers, but it has changed. It used to be, and the perception, the label we have for homeless, is the single guy that's hanging around. We appreciate our single men that come to us, but that's not the picture of who we're helping exclusively.
Now, in the daytime-
In the daytime.
Where do these people go?
Our, our shelter is open 24 hours. So we're not asking them, in the old days, we, we used to ask them to go to our Day Resource Center, but now we've incorporated so they can stay there. There'll be a common area, they'll be able to have more privacy in their rooms. They will stay at the shelter. Hopefully, we want them to go get on PRT ticket, or the PRT system, go to Health and Welfare, go to ISU, go get WIC, go find out if there's an obstacle, what they need to do to get over that, and go look for jobs.
What are your plans for the playground area?
It's going to be awesome.
I would expect nothing less from you.
I'm not positive yet. My initial thought, and we haven't gotten to the design stage, but there is yard in front, and, oh, also, we have a partner already in place. Joshua D. Smith rents a section of that property, and they are a social service provider. They also have property, or not property, but there's grass south of the building. So we'll be able to do that without it being in a place that's dangerous for the kids, having it on Lewis, there's not a lot of traffic, it's not like Center, it's not like South Fourth Street. I think we'll be able to do that quite well. I can't get past tonight, but we'll get there.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilman Bray.
One of the big contentions against this is that there are a number of police visits to Aid for Friends. It's 201 police visits. I've thrown two of them out, because I read through quite a, one of them was somebody found a dog, called the police, and they got the dog to the ul-. Okay, so that, that was one of them. Another one was, the one, the lengthiest report I saw was you had somebody that died unattended in the facility.
Right.
And that was the longest report. I don't think he caused much trouble.
No, no, he didn't.
Okay, but excluding those, how would you characterize? It says there are 50 police investigations for disturbances. There were 29 assault and battery investigations, and then multiple incidents of assault or battery with a deadly weapon. 13 arrests for outstanding warrants. Let's start with the 13 arrests.
May I defer to my expert? I have asked our shelter manager, Kim Ward, to do that same review, or he can speak later. I can tell you what, what I found. I didn't do the, the homework that he's done. He has an answer for that, okay?
Okay. Well, I think that's important.
I think it is, too. And I can tell you that Mr. Schropshire said that his review, that all of the incidents were involving only people utilizing the Aid for Friends, no other individuals in the community or surrounding neighborhood. A few resulted in arrests, but most were incidents resulted in police officers diffusing the issue on site with no further action required. We work so well with the, the Pocatello Police and the Sheriff's Office, and I don't know how you feel. Do you want Kim to come up and address that now?
If you don't have an answer to the question, then we need to get an answer to that question.
I don't have an answer to that question.
Okay, then why don't you have him come up?
Come on, Kim. Thank you. He really has done a lot of work on this.
Do you have any others for BJ before she leaves? Roger, are you going to have any others?
All right. Should I sign in?
Sure.
Okay.
Tell us who you are.
My name's Kim Ward, I'm the shelter manager for Aid for Friends. And I did investigate each one of these. We have a writing log at our shelter, so whenever there is an incident, we do write it down. So I was able to go through this entire list, and I can tell you pretty much, most of the issues, 60% of them, when I count it, involve some sort of severe mental illness as a part of the issue, but it may have came off as an assault or trespass, or, there were several different issues, but most of the people, for example, the sexual assault, the two of those that were reported, was by the same individual who has a very severe mental disorder, who, she suffers from delusions and persecution, and she does believe that she is sexually assaulted daily. And so, but, when the police investigated, there were two times that she wanted the police to be called. We did call, and when they did investigate it, they realized fairly quickly, as they, they did take her to the hospital, that there was no assault at all, no sexual assault.
Two versus 29, which is a-
Okay, so the 29, I did go through, violent investigation, so basically-
Assault or battery, okay.
Yeah, so, of those, and I have their numbers right here, okay, so, two were deemed to be just verbal arguments. Two gentlemen got in fights, arguments with each other. There were five citations and five arrests, I mean, five citations and arrests with the 25. So out of the 25, five resulted in some sort of legal recourse, okay? Of the others, they were just deemed to be unfounded. It wasn't enough to say that there was actual an assault or otherwise.
Okay, and it says multiple incidents of assault or battery with a deadly weapon.
There were two incidents that I found. One was when a gentleman and another man got in an argument, the guy happened to be buttering his toast at the same time, so he was holding a knife. And he didn't brandish it against the other guy, but the guy felt threatened, because he was holding a butter knife. The other assault was when someone threw a cop in someone's general direction. He's mentioned that he wasn't throwing it at him, but the police deemed that it wasn't an assault. There were two incidents where people attacked people at the shelter. There was a neighbor that lived across the street, and he came to the shelter with a machete and several knives, and he was disarmed by the individuals at the shelter, and the police were called. Another individual did come, it was a domestic violence issue, his wife was there, and he threatened that he had a gun, but there was no gun found. Another individual also mentioned that he had a knife, and this, there was no knife found. So these were all dispensed.
And how is it that 13 are arrested for outstanding warrants?
What we do is every time there's a check-in, actually, it was 18 that was arrested for outstanding warrants. What happens is every time someone checks in the shelter, part of our check-in procedure is to do a warrant check. Now, of those, I see it differently. People were arrested as they were trying to get there because they had a warrant outstanding. One of which was a violent felon from another state who was also here trying to run, he was a fugitive for injustice. I look at it, we took 18 people off the streets that may have posed some sort of threat.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm Terry New, the Assistant Planner for the City of Pocatello. As noted in the agenda, this is a reconsideration request for the conditional use permit that was approved by the hearing examiner following a public hearing held on December 13, 2018. The CUP is to allow transitional housing, homeless shelter, and administrative offices at 209 East Lewis Street. Municipal Code 17.02.400 allows appeals of the hearing examiner's decision to you, the City Council. The subject site is located within a commercial general zoning district with an original townsite overlay. Municipal Code 17.03.330 allows transitional housing in commercial general- general and central commercial zoning districts through the conditional use permit process. The property is surrounded by a mix of uses, including a lumberyard, unit civic rail yards, offices, warehouses, bars, restaurants, a pet boarding facility, and some residential uses, just to name a few. At the time of the hearing, before the Hearing Examiner, Planning Division staff found the request met the standards for a conditional use permit if the following conditions were met. One, building permits must be obtained for any changes to the building, and the facility must meet appropriate standards according to current building codes. Two, all life safety issues must be addressed according to current building codes. Three, all other applicable city code requirements not herein stated shall be met prior to occupancy of the building. The Hearing Examiner's approval included the conditions recommended by staff. There were fourteen individuals that spoke in opposition to the proposed CUP, and eight spoke in favor at the hearing before the Hearing Examiner. As of today, staff has received six letters in support of the reconsideration request, three of which were included in your packet, and the other three were given to you this evening. Staff has also received four letters in opposition to the reconsideration request, one of which was included in your packet, and the other three were given to you prior to this evening's meeting. This concludes my presentation, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Have any questions for Terry? So you feel like this meets our comprehensive plan?
Yes, it does. Housing is a big one for the comprehensive plan, and it does meet that because it focuses on a segment of society that is kind of left out. And that's what we need, is we need to be able to incorporate those segments of society that are kind of on the fringe.
So that group was intentionally addressed in the comprehensive plan?
Yes, as well as seniors. Yes.
Any other questions? So, thank you, Terry. So I will say we did receive, what is it, six, seven, two, three, four, five, six, seven comments that were not included in the packet. We received those tonight.
Yes.
The City Council, I believe, has had an opportunity to read through them, and so we just entered them into the record with that. Don't see any other questions, and so, thank you. Okay, so we will look for some testimony here now. I want to make sure we clarify something because it's gonna be confusing. I'm gonna ask for testimony supporting the appeal. This is the appeal, not the, not the application. So if you are supporting the appeal, if you would please go ahead and come up here. Anyone supporting the appeal? Okay, yeah, we're gonna have to move a little bit faster than that, folks, so come on up if you're gonna support it. Well, we've got a signing sheet here. What I need you to do is sign that sheet and then hand it back. And if we can just get people lined up, it'll make this meeting go a little bit faster. You will have three minutes, and that will start soon as we reset it to three minutes. Okay, so...
Mayor, City Council, appreciate your time this evening. My name is Bruce Hanson. We're the owner of Hanson General Supply here in Pocatello and Boise. We've been a local retail business operation now for thirty-two years. A homeless shelter moved in next to us in Boise, or close to us in Boise, a few years back. And there's a clear-cut timeline of when the homeless shelter entered into our neighborhoods, things started to happen in our neighborhood and drive down problems in our neighborhood. Proposal here in Pocatello, we don't believe that it meets the CUP requirement of being compatible with existing uses and consistent with our comprehensive plan. The proposal's location is in a major business district in Old Town Pocatello, and has become just lately very, very attractive to businesses. Aslet's Museum, Portnoy Brewing, the Food Bank, us, Ram White, Spencer's, In the Woods, the Physical, all of these people come to this area because now it's an exciting place to be doing business. We don't feel that a homeless shelter meets that criteria for our businesses to be around. I'm gonna give you some experiences that we're having over in Boise because I think history's the best looking to the future. Homeless shelters in the downtown retail business don't work. They don't work well next to each other. Chaotic effects happen, negatively affects against our customers or employees. We have frequent loitering, we have frequent trespassing, we have frequent littering around our business. Basically, all the stuff that you guys got in your packets handed out by Fred Lewis. You can see if you got my packet, which they said you would get it. The first picture on there is thirty feet from our front door. The syringes that are left by people using drugs out and around our business, we don't know how to pick them up, and we don't know how to get rid of them. City of Boise doesn't know what to do with them. The second one is feces left at our loading dock. This happens on a weekly basis, and we're supposed to go out and clean this up. The next one is plywood boxes and things left in our employee parking and our customer parking areas. The next one is another picture of it with a pet carrier left there that we have to take care of. The next one is in our employee and customer parking lot. You can see the feces running down the side of the building, the toilet paper that's left, the beer bottles that are left, the cans that are left around. Nobody comes to clean this up. We don't want to clean it up. We have liability issues. We don't want hepatitis. We don't want to be touching needles. Who's responsible for picking this stuff up? Effects of a shelter, when you concentrate on homeless individuals, they cluster around the shelters. These individuals may not even go to the shelter, have been kicked out of the shelter. These are people that leave the shelter during the day on their own. These are people that don't want to be part of the shelter, but they are around the shelter because of the services the shelters provide. Concentration, a concentration of other homeless services come together in the resources when an established shelter is provided. This has happened in Boise.
Bruce, thank you.
May I ask...
Absolutely.
Bruce, where is your facility in relation, or location-wise? I'm familiar with the Mission, right there by the Grove Hotel. Where are you located?
We're at nine-fourteen Lee, which is between Ninth and River.
Okay.
Are these pictures from your building now or the Boise facility?
Boise.
Boise, okay.
Boise. Any other questions I can answer?
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. And we did receive your packet, so you know, we...
My name's Jennifer Putnam. I own a building on two-thirty-seven East Center Street. I've owned the building for eight years. It's a retail, commercial establishment that existed before as Southeast Furniture. I think to answer Mr. Bray's question of why Old Town Pocatello is special is because we all pay extra money in order to improve Old Town Pocatello. My business, per year, I pay around five hundred dollars extra in property taxes per year. Each, each business is assessed for the Business Improvement District tax. So we are using that money to improve the business district. We're trying to get women and children to come down and shop in Old Town Pocatello because in the past, there have been reasons why people don't want to come down to Old Town Pocatello. They feel uncomfortable if there are strange people walking around. We've had problems with transient people already. We have a lot to deal with down in Old Town Pocatello. It's not that people don't support the homeless shelter. It's that we've invested so much into these businesses to, in order for us to just accept this and act as though it won't affect our businesses, it's just, it's just absurd, basically. I don't think that, there's anybody here who doesn't think that a homeless shelter's important. It does provide a great service to people. I was, I was looking for ways to try to adapt my business so that I could work with a homeless shelter. But after I looked at the statistics of the police arrests, I mean, you can't ask people to be shopping when the police are around. That's just, it's just not how people work. I can't change that perception of that this is a dangerous area when the police are there. I can't change the perception of if there's somebody who's walking around, who didn't get in the homeless shelter, who got kicked out of the homeless shelter, that they're going to not do anything erratic or disturb other people or ask for money or dig in the dumpsters. We already have enough problems where we're at, and we're already paying extra money in order to try to combat some of these problems, try to make improvements with flowers and bushes and make things look nice, have activities for kids. This will absolutely change. And I, for one, I would never have bought a business that has a homeless shelter behind it. It's just not something a business owner would do. It's nothing to say that I don't, I don't appreciate that the efforts that people go through to try to help the homeless. I was willing to decorate, help with some decorations, but I just can't do this and run a business.
Jennifer, thank you.
No questions?
Okay, next.
Hi, my name's Matt Spencer. I own five-twenty-eight East Center, five-eighteen East Center. It's the old Teamsters Building. We have Gypsy Line there now, as well as a vapor shop. We also have two-five-one East Center, the office bar and grill, two-forty-seven East Center, Shanghai Cafe, also three-thirty-four and three-forty, South First Avenue. For starters, I want to say that I appreciate what Aid for Friends is doing. It's actually, it's something that I feel is an issue that needs to be dealt with. And I don't necessarily like to have to oppose someone that I believe that needs to be helped. But at the end of the day, the effect that it has on us and our business is, we already deal with this, and I feel like the investment we've made in Old Town was really more of an investment in change. And we were hoping to be part of that change. And it, where we're at right now, it's not, the money that we've invested versus the return, it's not there. The change, it's still something that you're trying to create some gravity and some movement. And we deal with the homeless situation already. We have them down there. We, I've got a property on First where we've got a, an old, a vehicle that we need to get rid of, that we can't keep people out of. But we've had a resident from Aid for Friends that keeps coming back and leave. We've had prison hooch in there, a fire started in there. At the office bar and grill, we had a guy that camped out for three days before we actually asked him to leave, leave. And when we did, he destroyed all of the patio furniture. So is it, is something that we're trying to work with, but anymore, we can't. And I, and really, the momentum I feel that we have, and what's happened with the change down there, it's a positive thing. But I can't do anymore than I'm doing now. So I'd like to say that I have a solution, but really, for us, we just, we need to pay attention to our business and what's best for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor Blatt and council members. My name is Deborah Zikrach. My husband and I own property on three-three-five East Lewis in The Woods. And I would just like to begin by saying, having been a citizen of Pocatello for over forty years and, and co-owner of a business, we're committed to this community, and we believe that Aid for Friends offers a very important service. We are not opposed to the service they provide. We just believe that more thought needs to be given to the location where they will be more successful. I have a hard time believing that that location near five or six bars and some of the other businesses, I just don't see those as being compatible and a recipe for success for those individuals that are there. And just to give you a little historical context, in our business, we have dealt with a number of individuals who have tried to come through our business to get some handouts. We have had a fire that was set in our building, caused extensive damage, had to shut down our, our business for quite a while, couple of months, almost two-hundred thousand dollars worth of damage. And the police were never able to figure out who did that. My husband was assaulted once by an individual that just came in and assaulted him. We've had two break-ins. One was a robbery and one was vandalism. We've had graffiti on our building. We've picked up syringes around the area. So we're very familiar with the side effects that you get with the situation. And we're very concerned because the information we've been given is that Aid for Friends is proposing at least doubling the size of their service, or perhaps more. And so, you know, since we've experienced some difficulties, we're worried that can the city really handle an increased number of difficulties? So we're hoping that maybe some more thought can be given to a different location that might serve people better.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Hi, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rick Dunker. I own a property at five-oh-five South First, and it's the one that I've tried to turn into a garden. And I've made it my home. I've moved in twenty years ago, and I have this counter that came where somebody put, you know, "Our Vision of First Street." And I just like to see old places come back to life, old cities. I've been to Detroit, San Francisco, Las Vegas, and there's probably a couple other, to look to see how they revitalize their old city and bring it back to life. And in the process of doing that, I started with like a construction site and a building that was all boarded up. And I've tried to use some people from Aid for Friends, and there would be a time I could call and say, "Does anybody want to work?" And there would be people there. And in the last couple of years, that has changed. So I wanted to point that out, that it went from, I've been able to get people to come and help to, and I pay them, and then, no, not so much. But I do want to see this, the activity that thrives on First Street in the warehouse area. And I wanted to just represent how, how beautiful it is, that that area is so growing, and so many people are investing so much neat ideas and inspiration. And I just wanted you to know, I want to be a part of that, even though I'm really quiet and try to stay to myself. I just want to see our area thrive, and I don't feel that element with a greater shelter as my next-door neighbor, you know, two blocks away. And that's all I'd have to say for today.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Nope, doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I didn't get his minute, I guess, his extra minute.
Nope, you don't get the extra minute.
Thank you, folks, for, for your time. I'm Tim Zikrach. I was, along with my wife, own In The Woods, a building on East Lewis. And we've been there for forty years, probably longer than some of you have been in school. And in that time, I've seen a lot of different things in that area. And I've, I've suffered, I've survived Pocatello's ups and downs, many downs. And, but I've been loyal and, and worked hard to be a good citizen of this town and a representative as well as I possibly can. In that time, I've seen, in my area, I have seen, well, even in the downtown area, I've seen businesses come and go, properties be vacant for many, for many years. Across the street has turned over multiple times. The Tough Guy Bowling Lions has struggled the, over, over the years. The Anderson Lumber Fire, if any of you remember that, years ago, burned down that property, remained vacant for years. Next door to me, the property has, has turned over many times and has been vacant for a couple of years, for sure. Since the Old Town kind of started happening, things started moving our way, and thanks to Matt and his, his working on, on his establishment, he's turned, he's kind of pulled the focus... of pulled, uh, the focus over our way. And I've seen this, this momentum kind of coming our way. Pocatello Pet Lodge has come in and, and, and established that. They've taken over a building across the street at, on Second Street, which was kind of a interesting establishment, uh, um, uh, and, uh, so they took that over and improved that. Next door to me, uh, now, the building is not vacant anymore, but Safari Graphics has moved in. The, uh, Tough Guy Bowling Lines has improved and has painted their building. We have painted our building and improved it. My daughter has moved into half of my building, and we have spent a couple hundred thousand dollars and, uh, put in the new sidewalk, lighting, all of that stuff. Um, and, uh, so I just feel like there's a momentum that's happening, and I would hate for you guys to make a decision that would stifle that momentum. It just seems to be really, uh, growing, but I could see where, uh, the tough decision that you have could suppress that a little bit. The one last thing I'd like to say is that Pocatello prides itself on its parades, and the parades, many of those parades staged right on First Street, right exactly where Aid for Friends is going to, is being proposed.
Thank, thank you very much.
Lot of kids?
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Frank Newton, 6346 Old Ranch Road, Pocatello. Yeah, I've been fortunate enough to, had the opportunity to work with and sell a lot of these, uh, downtown buildings, uh, to a lot of investors. Everybody here knows the struggle that a lot of them have with the existing codes that we have in Pocatello that don't really benefit rehabbing and restoring older buildings. So, their money, generally speaking, is not returned back to them in a short period of time. Usually, it takes a lot of time. The good news here is, is that on January 26th, HUD just announced, uh, additional hundred and three million dollars for housing project shelter systems in Idaho, Oregon, Washington, and Alaska. So, that money is just now going to become available. So, as far as Aid for Friends or any other shelter organizations, there is some additional funding that's come available. I find it hard to take an existing building in an area where we have Center Street Clubhouse, the Office Bar, Odyssey Bar, First National Bar, Bourbon Barrel, Yellowstone, the Oasis, Portnitz Brewing, Jim Danties, and Hooigans, and put a homeless shelter right next to all these bars. I mean, in, in all honesty, I think that, that a lot of the problems that these folks are having, and I'm speaking out of turn because I'm not, I'm not qualified to do that, but that's an area of, you know, temptation, I guess I would say, is to put a homeless shelter next to a area that's surrounded by bars. In addition, I think that there's places inside the city of Pocatello that are still zoned in the county that might make a better area or a better place to purpose for these folks. So, repurposing an old building and turning it into something where I believe there's some money that could be made available for them to build a new shelter might make a lot more sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, City Council, Mayor Blad.
Um, thank you very much. Who has the sign-up sheet? You have it, okay.
Okay, thank you.
We just want to lose that thing, so, thank you.
My name is Kathy Rogers. I own property at 211 South Fourth, her Alibi Antiques. I sent you a letter. You have that. Um, first of all, I want to say, BJ, do you remember, I did a fundraiser for Aid for Friends? I want you to know I don't have anything against you.
Kathy, Kathy, would you stay focused up here, please?
Sorry, I just wanted to acknowledge that. I did a fundraiser for BJ and Aid for Friends several years ago. But I oppose having the transitional housing in our neighborhood. I could say a lot of things, but I think I'll just keep it with the fact that, are you still in real estate, Mr. Johnston?
Well, there's some people think I am. Yes, I am.
So, my husband and I are getting ready to retire. I'm going to sell my property, and I fear that there won't be a lot of people in the market to buy property, two and a half lots from a homeless shelter. So, that's my biggest concern, is property value. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, my name's Christine Cortepavas, and, um, I own a business on 246 East Center Street. It's a hair salon, and my brother owns, well, we own the building. It's 250 Center, it's Odyssey Bar, and we've had that building for, oh, probably fifty years or so. Anyway, um, we do have problems coming into our salon. I have nothing, I mean, I help people. People come into my salon, I let them use my restroom, I give them money, I have no problem with that. But when you have elderly people come into your salon, you know, little women, you know, women, and we're, there's three women in my salon. And the one girl that I have in the salon, she is always there from seven o'clock, from about eight o'clock in the morning till seven at night. And we have men that are homeless that come into our salon and bother her all the time. Want to use our bathroom, which I have no problem with. We've had to put a sign up not to let this particular individual in, and has caused a lot of problems. He's been kicked out of many places, and they arrested him, I believe, also. Anyway, I have no problem with that, but it causes problems with some of our customers that come into our, our, you know, our place, you know? And, um, I, I feel bad saying that because I have a very tender heart with people, and I want them to have a good place. But when it comes to a business and you're afraid to walk in and out, I have to watch my people, because there's many of them walking up and down our place. And you can say that that building's been over there. We have, um, a lot of rehabilitation places, and they come in, you know, and they walk past our place, and I have no problem. But when they're bothering the people that are coming into your business, and, and people are afraid, and, you know, they're not all that way, but there are those few that, you know, we have a problem with. And, anyway, um, we've been there a long time. We pay money so we can beautify our area, you know? And, um, like I said, I've been there thirty years, myself. Um, also, um, I just have a question that I'm supposed to ask, and it was, um, so, if these people go to these homeless shelters and they're not allowed, or they're not, um, they don't meet the criteria, where do they go? I mean, that's a question I want to know. Where do they go for this? You know, if they're not allowed, they come and hang out, I think it, you know, around our areas, you know, and cause problems. You know, I, I feel horrible. I don't mean, they need a place. I just don't think it's in the right area in our, our business. And that's all I have to say. I mean, I'm scared to death.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
I'm Debbie Hansen, and I'm Bruce's wife. I'm, we co-own, I'm Hansen Janitorial Supply together, and, um, I just want to say that this area, our area of the historic downtown warehouse district is undergoing change. You can see, you can feel it in the air, and I felt it when I went to the Whitman, when I went down to the Hotel Yellowstone sign lighting after the parade. And, um, they lit the sign, and there was such energy and people applauded. And I just, and I realized this rich energy, the rich history that's in this area, and we're, we need to be so proud of it. And I just know from our Boise store that there are just so many problems with homeless people hanging around. And it's not that I am against the homeless. I know they need a place, and God bless them, but I just feel like it's going to kill the, um, the growth and the renewal that's happening in our area. And I just want to tell a story of, um, our son was at our Boise store, and he got into an argument with a homeless person that was throwing things in our dumpster. And, um, Christopher, my son, backed down because he felt like it was going to start getting physical. And then he heard the next day that that man had stabbed, stabbed a skateboarder. I mean, that, those are the kind of people that we could potentially be dealing with. And, um, I've been over there at times that I felt like I've needed to watch my back. And, um, I just think that we don't really realize what's coming at us with this homeless shelter, because they really do cause problems, and, um, there are some scary people, and you, when you walk around or walk out of your building, or your customers are walking out, I mean, it really is going to be an issue. And we're just getting such a good start of renovating the historic warehouse district and the downtown area, and I feel like this is really going to put a damp on it. And thank you.
Thank you. Any, any others supporting the appeal? Okay, any?
Ma'am? I apologize for sending you late.
That's okay.
My name is Nathan Palmer. I'm an attorney at the law firm of Versine Olson. Um, I represent a lot of business owners and individuals who are excited to, um, begin a business and form a business and invest in Pocatello. And the excitement surrounding the investment in the properties in this area is, is pretty palpable. People are excited to become part of this town and become part, specifically of Old Town. Um, all the events, the sidewalk events, the parades, um, that's something that I discuss with clients on a regular basis. Also, I think it's important to point out that when we talk about the comprehensive plans and the competing goals of providing for, um, those in need, as well as providing for economic development and business owners, I feel like the, this is not a situation where it's a matter of exist, of Aid for Friends existing and providing those services. They already are. So, the city is actually already, um, in my opinion, complying and meeting that goal of providing some services and providing those services through Aid for Friends. The city is also providing for, um, economic development through, for small business owners and those interested in investing in the city of Pocatello. So, the denial or denial of the conditional use permit at this point does not, um, does not go against the city's comprehensive plan, because Aid for Friends can, can continue to exist and continue to provide those homeless, uh, the homeless and those in need with, with those benefits. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we've got a question for you.
I just got to ask this question. Does your law firm represent businesses exclusively, or do you represent felons and misdemeanors?
Um, our law firm, we have close to twenty attorneys in practice in all various practice areas, so.
So, you probably are bringing in, as your clientele, some of the people you're saying Aid for Friends shouldn't bring in?
No, I'd say that's a very, very small portion of our, of our clientele.
But I mean, if they're, they're having people who are, um, meaning to be arrested, arrested, you're getting them out, right?
We're not. We actually have contracts and as prosecutors, as prosecuting attorneys, trying to enforce the laws as well.
Yeah, I know, but you're, you're getting, you're weighing in for bond, and you're weighing in, you're eat, all that type of stuff.
Uh, we're not. We're actually, our, our, our firm has contracts with the city of Chubbeck as prosecutors, the city of American Falls as prosecutors, so enforcing those laws.
Okay.
Yes.
So, you're not defense attorneys?
Uh, we have a few attorneys that do some criminal offenses, very small portion of our practice.
Okay. Okay, just had to ask.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any others supporting the application, uh, the, the appeal? Not the application, but the appeal?
Hello, my name is Derek. I work down in Old Town, and I also live on Second Street, right around the area. Um, I just wanted to say that I would really like to be able to walk from ISU down into Old Town through the underpass, which is, hasn't really been touched on at all tonight, and over to the Portnitz River, um, without having to look over my shoulder or even have to worry about the potential of encountering someone who might be a little bit, first of all, um, mental issues, some of, encountering someone that might have mental issues, also someone that was denied access to a homeless shelter, um, that is not someone that I want to be encountering as I'm walking from my house to the place I work, or from the school down to the river, and trying to access all these things that the great city of Pocatello has to offer. Thank you.
Derek, what's your last name? Fulgrath.
Okay, any others in supporting the appeal?
I am Matt's sister-in-law. We also own a building together on First Street, and I heard both sides, BJ mentioned no labels and things like that. Well, in a group, she did put Matt into a group of a label. And you might want to sit there and think, "Well, here's somebody that's making a stink." Well, I'm proud that he is up here trying to protect what he has built, because it's not just that he's in Pocatello. We can live anywhere we want to because of the money that we make is not from Pocatello, it's oil and gas. And we have, um, my husband and him have chose to live in Pocatello to support this community, have hired engineer, so all the money that is being made other places comes back here. That's included in the buildings that they buy, the people that they hire, my sister-in-law that goes down on Sundays to clean that bar in the morning, and then, just to think of her going down there, leaving her daughter, you know, with me, or my mother-in-law. What if somebody were to come in there while she's cleaning the bar at five in the morning, you know? My nephew, that's also in there many days early in the morning. So, the concern I have for a shelter being right there is not just the safety of my family, it would also be the building that we haven't put more money into. You guys are talking about, you know, everyone's put improvements. We put windows and paint, it's been graffitied. The fact that we're not putting more money into it right now is kind of on halt to see what you guys choose to do, because honestly, what are we supposed to do? Put a wedding venue in there for you guys to put a shelter in and then have people? Who's going to want to come and have like a wedding venue, or a party scene, or something like that? You know, that's a different part of the community, right next to a shelter, because it, our, the building is on First Street, kitty corner, touching it. Um, also, I don't know. I just want you guys to really consider the people that are out here putting, you know, everything that they have back into this community to hopefully give it back to our children, because we could live anywhere we choose to live in Pocatello, and we want to buy more Pocatello. We want to improve the city. So, I hope that you guys think of other resources and exhaust other avenues for whatever has been presented to you up until this point. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, any others in support of the appeal? Okay, any uncommitted to the appeal?
Susan Mann, Pocatello, Idaho. I'm going to try to stick to the facts here, because that's what I would like to address to the city council and the mayor, is we've heard a lot of different items quoted, but I'm not sure that we're getting the facts on all of the sides. So, I would encourage you as the city council to investigate and see exactly what's going on. I've been to a number of city council meetings, and I'm speaking only for myself as a citizen of Pocatello. We have a homeless problem in Pocatello. Not having a homeless shelter is not going to make those people go away. Those people are still here. I walk around the community, I see them. I'm not afraid to walk around this community. Every homeless person that I have met, I've encouraged conversation with. I've been able to communicate with them, I've been able to see them as a person. There's been a lot of stereotypes, maybe on both sides, but these people are people. They're in a situation. They're not necessarily a drunk, they're not necessarily a person that's going to cause problems. I would like you to also investigate the bars that are in this area. How many police incidents have the bars had? We've only heard statistics on one side. Maybe it sounds like a lot of people. Maybe the bars have not had any incidents, but I believe they probably have. So, I think when you're looking at that, you need to look at both sides of the issues to see where the problems are there. Um, I'm here to speak up as a person that would be willing to have a, I don't know what you call them exactly, but we've had a River Walk, um, where people can participate and say, "What can we do with the River Walk?" We, we're asking now for people to say, "What can we do with the zoo plan?" I think it's time that the city has a plan I think it's time that the city has a plan for the homeless. I'm offering my services to help organize that. We've got to figure out a solution for it. The people are here. Idaho is ranked number 14 for having homeless population that we're not dealing with. They're still here, people, whether you build something or you don't build something. I don't know where the best place to build it is, but it's got to be somewhere. You've got to build something. I just encourage you, I'm trying to stay neutral here because I want you to really listen and come up with a solution because there has to be a solution. We have to deal with the homeless people in Pocatello. Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan stole my speech. My name is Mike Popovich. I'm pastor of First Baptist Church. I'm co-founder and on the board of Valley Mission. I'm in the middle only because I want to just raise the issue again. We have homeless people. We are a large town. I don't know that we've addressed this issue with a large-town mentality. We don't need one mission, one homeless shelter, we need many. What's interesting is, if you listen to the business owners on one side, before the shelter moves to this new location, if that is indeed improved, they already have problems. We're a downtown church. We have walk-ins every single day. Not just when we do our food pantry that feeds about 180 people per week on Thursdays. There is a continuous flow of people walking in the door. That's part of businesses, whether you're on Yellowstone or on downtown, and I couldn't agree more with Susan, we need a commission. We need to put our heads together, we need to come up with some solutions, and then together, business owners, residents, wherever these locations might be, one of the reasons we're speculating so much is there's very little done in town. We have the Crisis Center coming. The Crisis Center is going to be a triage center. Where are they going to send them? We have a limited number of beds. One of the things we need are more beds. Whether that's transitional living, supervised group living, at all levels, we need more. If we're going to grow as a town, if our expansion's coming, we're excited about all that's going to happen, the homeless aren't going to go away. We need more help. So along with Susan, I'm offering my services as an opportunity to sit down. We deal with this every day. We're in the business of doing this, and we need more in our community to meet that need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, if I don't write my name, I'll forget. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Kelly Hopwood. I live at 1210 Willard Avenue. I was before you a couple of months ago, strongly opposing the rezone for Big Mama's House. I would like to speak about the proposed expansion. I do understand the businesses' concern. Their lives and livelihood all center around their business. Businesses that Pocatello claims to want to restore, the heart of Pocatello, the historic district where this lovely town began. Can a homeless shelter and a successful business run side by side? The most concerning to me is the homeless that get turned away from the shelter, whether it be because they are sex offenders or because they are using alcohol or drugs. These people have absolutely no place to go, and it is up to them to find somewhat reasonable shelter, even in weather such as this. I can understand why these people might break the law to keep warm, even break into a car or building to survive. I can understand that these people are inconvenient for the surrounding businesses. I'd hate to see more businesses leave this town. But on the other hand, Aid for Friends does a tremendous amount of good with their current location, and they would be able to help a considerable amount more in the proposed space. Their renovation plans would take a building that is currently empty and update it. They are a longstanding business with adequate policies and a business plan. The new and expanded areas in the new project are also wonderful for community members who are struggling to get items from their donation center for free and to use their laundry services. I admire the expansion of a workforce area to help with resumes, job training, and educational resources for their clients. As a teacher, I feel like this is a long-term solution for, I can't say ending homelessness, but helping homelessness numbers go down. It is against Aid for Friends' policy to have sex offenders, recently released convicts, or anyone under the influence of drugs or alcohol. This policy keeps their families and children safe at the shelter, but it also leaves the community with a number of people on the streets with nowhere to go. And yes, this makes some areas in our town unsafe. I have tried to choose one side or another of this issue. I originally wanted to stand and say that Aid for Friends had everything the Big Mom's House didn't. And although that is true, I understand the fact that these businesses did not choose to operate next to a homeless shelter. And it does change the social layout of First Street, Center Street, and into Old Town. I would like to believe that this expansion would do more harm than good, but who am I to sacrifice people's interests against other people's well-being? I would like you to consider starting a volunteer committee to help the city of Pocatello with this issue. A committee with members from all sides to gather the facts and information to report on the homelessness issue, as well as brainstorm solutions about the gaps that are not filled in this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application?
Hi, my name's Tally Thomas, and I'm actually, I grew up in Pocatello until I was 10 years old. My dad was a coach for Idaho State University. And I now live in Seattle and I attend Stanford University. But one way that I just wanted people to look at it differently was that two of my friends right now that attend Stanford University grew up in shelters, homeless shelters, because their parents weren't able to afford enough for them. And the shelters actually gave them the support and the need that they needed to make it to a school like Stanford. So to say that all of these people are bad or negative is completely wrong because these people are still able to accomplish even more than what a typical average person would be able to accomplish. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Any others uncommitted to the application? Sounds like we're going to take a break for a minute? If there's no others, before we do that, any others uncommitted? Okay, we're going to go ahead and take a break for a few minutes. We've been here working for quite some time, and we will be right back to hear any opposed to the appeal. If I can get your attention, we're going to go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Thank you very much for hanging out and staying with us for a minute. I did see a lot of people signing their name down on the sheet. I appreciate that. If you would please remember who you signed behind and go after them. Do we need that? Do we need any orders? So if you have, if you have signed the sheet and you're the first one to sign the sheet, we're going to go ahead and start talking about testimony of those opposed to the application.
To the appeal.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, opposed to the appeal. If you are the first, just please make sure your testimony is in the same order that you signed the sheet. I would appreciate it. So would our clerks.
Don't speak unless you're known.
Yeah, make sure your name's on there for your speaking to. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead. Any testimony opposed to the appeal? Looks like we got plenty.
Good evening, Mayor Blad, our esteemed council. My name is David Doran. I live on Stansberry Street here in the city of Pocatello. I'm here to voice my personal support for Aid for Friends' project on 209 East Lewis Street. Aid for Friends desperately needs a new shelter arrangement to implement their services effectively. The current facility is outdated, in need of significant renovations, and too small to address the demands for homelessness within this community. In addition, this new space can accommodate Aid for Friends' administrative offices, which will create a more integrated and internal operation. This project location is also very ideal, centrally located, near public transit, and a variety of supportive services, including those located within the building I work just one block away. Hope and Recovery Resource Center, the Area Agency on Aging, Information and Assistance Center, Mental Health and Counseling Services, among others, the Public Library, as well as the Idaho Food Bank. Furthermore, this proposed project is within a very unique building, formerly Pocatello City Hall, which has been vacant for over two years now. The proposed location is just shy of .5 miles, a six-minute and 45-second walk on a brisk evening like tonight, from its current location. My personal residence is less than one mile away from its current location and approximately 1.1 mile from the proposed location. I frequently ride my bike or walk past both locations, and I have never felt unsafe, only compassion and hope. Renovating this space in conjunction with this integral community service creates a win-win scenario for our community and with the many stakeholders who are here to voice their opinion tonight. I offer my strongest endorsements for your consideration and approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask Dave a question?
Absolutely.
Dave, have you had any negative experiences with the Aid for Friends' administrative offices in your building?
I've been working in this building for approximately seven years, and from the beginning, I have not observed one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is John Bulger. I'm a local attorney. Please don't shudder when I say that. The proposed facility is directly across the street from my office. I can look out my office window from the second floor and see the building. Our building, of course, is also then in the Business Improvement District. I wish to raise two points here for your consideration today. There's been some talk about what Aid for Friends is and isn't. What it isn't, it is not a factory producing homeless people. Understand that. This is a place where those who need a place to go can go. This facility serves a vital function in keeping families, emphasis on families, that's children and their parents together from experiencing homelessness and at the perils that all homelessness entails. And by doing so, it gathers people who would be otherwise dispersed throughout the community to a central location. This is a benefit to law enforcement as well as the community at whole. The current facility is turning families away because it's full. Second point is my legal point, at which I direct your attention to a recent decision to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals called Martin versus City of Boise. Boise facilities turned away homeless seeking shelter due to their limited capacity. This resulted in homeless seeking shelter wherever they could. A number of those individuals were charged with violating local ordinances for camping. In a nutshell, the Ninth Circuit said that the cruel and unusual punishment clause of the Eighth Amendment precluded the enforcement of a statute prohibiting sleeping outside against homeless individuals with no access to alternative shelter. The panel held that as long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter. We have several local codes that are implicated in this. Trespassing is unlawful for a person to lodge, camp, or sleep on the property of another without the consent of the owner. That would apply to both private and public properties. Disorderly conduct is unlawful for any person to remain in any public building or place without permission of persons of such public building or place. Restricted hours of parks until one hour after sunset, it shall be a misdemeanor to be present in municipal parks. I could go on. Martin versus Boise decision, which I'll leave a copy for your council, at least the splash page here so that they can reference this, I submit here that Aid for Friends has met its burden, unlike what's been indicated earlier. The burden has now shifted to the impotence in this case. I urge you to have this permit. Go forward, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Blad and members of the city council, my name is Chris Freeburn, and I am the East Hub Regional Director for the Department of Health and Welfare, and I am here on behalf of that agency in support of Aid for Friends. Over the past year, I've had the opportunity to tour Aid for Friends' shelter and have visited their proposed location. I have toured the men's and women's homeless shelters in Idaho Falls and Boise, and in my career, I've seen over 30 residential and inpatient facilities across the state. Drawing from those experiences, it is my opinion that the current shelter has exceeded its usable life. While Aid for Friends does the best they can, this new location fulfills a critical need for their program today, for their future, and most importantly, for our homeless population. The Department of Health and Welfare identifies this area as Region 6, which includes Bannock and six other counties. The estimated regional population is 170,000, and as the pastor said in her implication, we do have needs in this community and in this area. So in Region 6, we have 31,000 people receiving Medicaid, 7,500 in the Medicaid gap, 20,000 receiving food stamps, 2,500 receiving cash assistance, 900 parents or guardians receiving childcare assistance, and 150 children in foster care. Keeping with Region 6, in calendar year 2018, our two-on-one care line and navigation program referred over 200 individuals to emergency or homeless shelters, and over 450 individuals to housing-related programs. This is only from one program and does not include data from other department programs or community agencies that made referrals to Aid for Friends or other housing-related agencies in our region. The numbers do, however, illustrate the pressure on individuals and families and on the various state, local, and nonprofit agencies to help move people towards self-sufficiency. Aid for Friends' proposed location will allow them to better meet the needs of individuals and families and provide the city and region with a new shelter that can make us proud of the way we care for our homeless population. I understand there are concerns about the impact on businesses. However, there are existing businesses, as I've been mentioned, near the proposed location that help address some, not all, of the contributing reasons for homelessness. Joshua D. Smith and Associates is an outpatient mental health provider and would be co-located. Three other community agencies are within a few blocks, and they include the Hope and Recovery Center, Behavioral Treatment Center, and Morehouse, which is a 15-bed male-only, safe-and-sober living facility. So Mayor Blad and members of the city council, I urge you to uphold the hearing examiner's decision of approval, and thank you for the opportunity to provide our support.
Thank you.
Could I add your name again? I couldn't write that.
Chris Freeburn.
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Brady Ellis with Idaho Housing and Finance Association. My organization is an expert on homelessness response and initiatives. We administer programs funded with millions of federal and private dollars, and in doing so, partner with over 50 nonprofit organizations across Idaho, including here in Pocatello. I encourage council to make a determination on this matter based on established code and fact, not conjecture in fear of what may occur. Pertinent facts concerning this matter are, one, the subject property is not located within the Business Improvement District, Warehouse Historic District, nor the East Side Downtown Historic District. The subject property is located in the Commercial General Zone, which allows for transitional housing, include emergency shelter. The proposed use of property is consistent with Goal 7 of Chapter 8 of the city's comprehensive plan, which is intended to support programs and provide for the needs of people within the community during times of distress, including shelter safety, nourishment, and counseling, all activities performed by Aid for Friends. The proposed use of the property is also consistent with Goal 5 of Chapter 12, which is intended to support public, private entities and programs that provide emergency shelter and support services for the homeless, again, activities of Aid for Friends. The proposed use of the property is also consistent with Goal 2 of Chapter 4, which is intended to promote and encourage the expansion of existing businesses. The opposition states that the most important parts of the comprehensive plan are those concerning economic development. Aid for Friends currently operates a walk-in site and administrative offices one block from the subject property and should be afforded the city's support in expanding. The expanded shelter space in the new location would allow for expanded workforce development centered within the shelter. This has the potential to provide or deliver additional workforce to the surrounding businesses, thereby supporting economic development in the area. The opposition expressed written concern over the aesthetics of the new shelter in the paperwork that was received. However, the subject property has fine historic architecture that will not, that will remain intact. The current shelter location is 5,000 square feet. The new shelter space would use approximately 8,000 square feet of shelter space. The city's made reference in the reconsideration because their homeless challenges are located in large cities in states with some of the highest populations of homeless individuals, and are not appropriate comparable cities. Of the seven regions within- Of the seven regions within Idaho, this region ranks fifth in the number of homeless persons. The homeless challenges experienced in Boise have occurred a result of not providing the appropriate supports and shelter to those without it. Aid for Friends and IHFA are offering a preemptive solution. An emergency shelter would be in harmony with the operations of many of the nonprofits and social service agencies currently operating in the surrounding area. There are 11 social service agencies, five of which are nonprofits, and several of which provide housing to extremely low-income households. The existence of the current shelter has not reduced property value of surrounding properties, and many opposing comments.
Brady, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Teri Bergmeyer. Thank you for the opportunity, Mayor Blatt and councilmembers, to provide my comments. I am in favor of using the property at 209 East Lewis Street for the use as suitable temporary accommodations for homeless individuals and families as defined by HUD. Aid for Friends is identified as the lead agency to address homelessness in the Pocatello Comprehensive Plan. For 35 years, the agency has worked diligently with HUD, IFHA, Idaho Housing and Finance Association, the City of Pocatello, CDBG funds, United Way, local businesses, churches, coalitions, and private donors to build an effective continuum of care. Folks can move from homelessness in Pocatello to their own personal home housing conditions through the continuum that we've created here in Pocatello. As a past director of Aid for Friends in the 90s, I remember one of the first transitional housing success stories that happened. I experienced while working at Aid for Friends a young single mother with her two-year-old daughter who showed up in crisis. The woman was pregnant, she needed medical review, and she needed off the street. Her decision to find help was pivotal, pivotable in her life. She delivered her baby and found an adoptive family. As she stabilized, she found work, and she had the desire, as she moved into Aid for Friends, first-ever transitional housing. This was a while back. We now have a much more improved system. This was a basement apartment in the United Church of Christ over off of, I think it's Arthur Street. Through that experience, this young lady eventually put all the pieces together and moved out on her own. I was invited to her wedding several years later. Aid for Friends provides this remarkable service 24/7 in a facility that no longer meets the community's needs. Tonight will be one of those nights where people may be in jeopardy. Temperatures are going to drop to near zero, and I hope that we don't experience any negative effects from that due to the lack of sheltering. I know there are objections to Aid for Friends' proposal, and those objections to use this site include police incidents, revitalization of this neighborhood, and safety, all of which I think we've heard from the business sector side. I don't know who those people are that are doing these things, but I don't know that we can profile them as homeless Aid for Friends individuals. The evidence in favor of this site for use as a shelter is convincing.
Teri, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Deborah Hammer. I am the Executive Director, CEO of Southeastern Idaho Community Action Agency, commonly known as CECA. Our business address is 621 North Eighth. I'm here tonight to testify in support of Aid for Friends' proposal to utilize the former City Hall building located at 209 East Lewis for the much-needed homeless shelter in Pocatello. CECA owns and operates a 10-unit, single-room occupancy apartment complex directly adjacent to their proposed site. We are the converted jail that used to be with City Hall. The building was rehabbed in 1994 for its current purpose and has housed hundreds of individuals. CECA also owns and operates an eight-bed facility for homeless military veterans since 1994, known as Freedom Landing Zone. There have been times in the past two years where facilities' beds have been so full that a homeless veteran has slept on the couch in the day room. There is a need in this community for a larger homeless shelter. Statistics across the nation and locally bear out that homelessness is an issue. Homelessness is an issue. The reasons vary depending on what research you conduct, mental health issues, addiction, lost jobs, lost homes, whatever the reason, the bottom line is safe shelters needed for this population. Aid for Friends has been in operation since 1984. That's 35 years of experience and expertise dealing with the unique needs and issues of the homeless. Sheltering and caring for the homeless is difficult, but as Aid for Friends has demonstrated since 1984, it can be done well, and it can be done. Aid for Friends has stringent policies and processes concerning their facility. It isn't a facility where homeless people can simply wander in and out day, all night, and all day. Their administrative offices will also be located in the same facility, adding an extra layer of assurance that the facility will be monitored. Aid for Friends also has several community partners, CECA being one of them, that have close working relationships with them to assist to the added resources to help the homeless people they serve. In the January 1st, 2019, issue of the Idaho State Journal, an editorial appeared that stated, I quote, "Let's resolve to make 2019 the year where the Pocatello area takes on homelessness head-on, builds a shelter in the right place, and proves to the rest of the world that we're a community that cares." But we're also not a community that allows not, I want to add my own spin to that, which I agree with, but I want to add that we're not a community that allows not in my backyard. This is the right place and the right time to approve Aid for Friends' request. Thank you.
Hello, Brenda Pollard, 215 West Maple, and I would like to speak about my years in housing and in neighborhood work. Thirty-five years volunteering in neighborhoods, starting from the year that I was honored as the Neighborhood Watch Volunteer of the Year, and then 25 years working with housing issues, which include Pocatello Neighborhood Housing, now Neighborhood Works Pocatello, Gateway Habitat for Humanity, Southeast Idaho Homeless and Housing Coalition, and then also serving currently and for the past six years on the Community Development Block Grant Committee. From every one of those perspectives, and also having been a business owner on South First, we owned the warehouse at 658 South First and the current warehouse at 856 South First, and we've worked in the Westwood Mall for the past 25 years. Having experienced businesses in both areas, I still feel like the proposed site is a perfect location for Aid for Friends. I feel very comfortable that it will be a place that will support the goals of the neighborhood, that will support the individuals at the center, and that it's ideal for what it allows the Aid for Friends organization to do and to flourish. The experiences we had between our two business sites are very similar. I wouldn't say that South First was a more negative experience than Westwood Mall. At both locations, we've had difficult times. I think anywhere you have a business, there are difficult times with individuals. That's part of life in different individuals. But I also think that there's always fear about change, and I'd like to just be a voice of hope and optimism and also encouragement that as a decision is made tonight, that as a community, we can pull together and support our Business Improvement District, that we can work to support Aid for Friends, and if there are issues that come up, that we take it on as a community. I personally am happy to do that, to be part of a solution. I would like to say that the Aid for Friends management has been very careful in their selection of the site, and I couldn't be happier with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Muriel Roberts. I live at 545 and a half, South 19th in Pocatello. I'm here to support the plan of...
Excuse me, Muriel, we're going to start your time all over again. We're going to take a second. We're going to just wait for a few minutes. Councilwoman Manon was not feeling good and feeling dizzy, and so we want her to be able to hear all the testimony, and so we will take a few minutes before we continue. Okay, thank you very much, and we're going to start your time over again. Thanks for joining us again after the break. We'll go ahead and start the meeting all over again.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Muriel Roberts. I live at 545 and a half, South 19th Avenue in Pocatello. I'm here to support the plan of Aid for Friends to move to a building for an approved homeless shelter. I've read the staff report, and it's clear that this is a perfect place for Aid for Friends to relocate. Frankly, I cannot understand why anyone would oppose this use for the building or object to the issuing of a conditional use permit. Having helped redecorate rooms at the current shelter, having delivered food many times to the small kitchen they now have, and knowing that they do not always have beds enough for the people who are in need, I know this new facility is necessary. Pocatello, as we've heard tonight, is a caring community. Let's give Aid for Friends the opportunity to care for even more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mark Seko. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed City Council and concerned attendees. I'm Sunny Shaw, the Executive Director of Housing Alliance and Community Partnership just across the road here at 711 North Sixth Avenue. I stand before you tonight to support the proposed location for Aid for Friends. We all agree, there's no question that we do have households struggling with homelessness in our community. There's also no question that we need to support Aid for Friends and their plan to expand their shelter. This goes beyond Aid for Friends' responsibility and is actually a community responsibility. Clearly, IHFA and Aid for Friends have been very thoughtful in the selection of this location. The zoning at 209 East Lewis already complies with the requirements for a shelter. Homeowners are not being asked to change their neighborhood zoning. In addition to appropriate site selection, many of the 209 East Lewis neighbors have written in support of the shelter moving to this location. Those who have anxiety regarding the location list safety concerns among some of those concerns that they have. And I'll just share with you that one of the interns that we had for a couple of years that was going to school, ISU, for two years lived directly across the street from Aid for Friends, and she has shared with me that as a young, single female, she never once felt unsafe or threatened living at that apartment directly across the street from the current shelter. I believe her experience speaks very clearly to the concerns that some of these property owners may have. Furthermore, as we speak of economic development, the shelter's proposed workforce development center will indeed add to Pocatello economic development. Finally, I would ask this council to consider, what kind of community do we want to be? I believe that a fair and just society ensures that the basic needs of its most vulnerable populations are met at the community level. I also like to believe that Pocatello is a fair and just community. Our homeless households must have a place. If not at this location, if not here, then where? Just because people lack money does not mean that they lack value. I ask you to deny this appeal and to support the proposed location for Aid for Friends to show that you truly do value all citizens of Pocatello. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Carrie Jennings. I've been in Pocatello since 2001. I want to tell you about my history first in Pocatello and then a little why I'm here tonight. First of all, I own a home in Chubbick. I bought my home in 2010. All six of my children graduated from Pocatello High Schools. I work at the university. I'm a financial aid counselor. I got a bachelor's degree at ISU, I got a master's degree at ISU, and I'm on the Board of Directors for Aid for Friends and have been since 2010. But I'm not here today, though, because I'm on the board or supporting the board. I'm here today, and not even as a community member, I'm here today as a former resident or a former client of Aid for Friends. When I first moved to Pocatello, I was fleeing a bad domestic situation, and over the course of seven months staying with other people, I ended up at Aid for Friends with my three young children. I had a 10-month-old, a two-year-old, and a three-and-a-half-year-old, and we stayed at Aid for Friends. It was supposed to be for 30 days, but I had no place to go. I couldn't go back to where I was, to the bad situation, and put my kids in danger myself. I couldn't go back to my friends and ask them to let me stay with them longer, so I stayed at Aid for Friends with my three children. I actually ended up staying there for three months. I had three months left for my name to come up on the Idaho Housing list, to get assistance through Idaho Housing, so Aid for Friends allowed me to stay there for that three months with my small children. In those three months, I started working at teleperformance. I didn't have a car, so I was walking with my kids. Somebody had donated a double stroller. I was walking with my kids from the shelter, where it is now on Fourth Street, to where they had a daycare, which is way in the other direction, to teleperformance, the 151 Building on Third Street, and then back and back. And then through my time at Aid for Friends, everybody that goes to Aid for Friends, three things. One, you have to be breathless even to walk in the door. Another, you have a 10:00 curfew, everybody does. And the other is everybody gets case management. So through my case management, to find out what resources I needed, I learned about night classes through the College of Technology, and I started Microsoft Office Suite classes in order to get some job skills. I had previously been a stay-at-home mom for the last 10 years. So I started my ISU college career as a homeless person, staying at Aid for Friends. And there's a lot of talk about fear of homeless people and how dangerous they are. I'm here to tell you that I am that person. I am a homeless person. I was a homeless person. Me and my three babies stayed at that shelter for three months, and we never once had a problem with anybody. I have lifelong friends, actually, that still live in the area that we all stayed when the bad situation, at the same time, in the same place, and we are still friends to this day, that just people who are down on their luck, who just needed an extra helping hand, and that's what Aid for Friends was. It was the place that made me feel safe with my kids.
Thank you, Carrie. Let's not applaud or let's just do the meeting. Thank you.
I am Mary Cox from McCammon. Yes, McCammon. For Aid for Friends serves the entire area, the area down south. Give me food, clothing, cash, and towels to deliver to the homeless shelter. I have been a member of the Board of Directors of Aid for Friends for over a dozen years, and throughout that time also served as liaison between the Pocatello First Presbyterian Church and Aid for Friends. I have been amazed at the opposition to Aid for Friends' proposal to move to its shelter some three blocks west. Misinformation and stereotypes abound. Much testimony at the hearing on Aid for Friends' proposal and some of the statements made in the appeal now being heard have at best been misleading. Much of the opposition seems to stem from the equating of homeless with panhandlers and drifters. The later are not the population Aid for Friends serves. Indeed, over 20 of the current residents are children, for whom the proposed location, being off a heavily-traveled major street, would be considered considerably safer. The shelter has a no alcohol, no drug policy, and enforces a 10:00 curfew for those staying in the facility. I visit the shelter at least twice a week in my dual capacities as a board member and church liaison, and have never felt uncomfortable or threatened. Quite the contrary, I am greeted with smiles and thanks for the things I bring, and a helping hand is always volunteered when I have heavier items, even some that are not heavy. If I, as a lone 84-year-old woman, can feel comfortable at Aid for Friends, the residents of the homeless shelter certainly do not offer a threat to the businesses of those who have appealed the hearing officer's recommendation. And I might add, my husband is here tonight, is comfortable with me going there alone as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Jenny Acevedo, 14456 West Chubbick Road in Pocatello. I'm Jenny Acevedo, 14456 West Chubbick Road in Pocatello. I'm the Executive Director of the Bannock Youth Foundation. I've worked for the Bannock Youth Foundation for over 30 years. I've been the director since 2012. Bannock Youth Foundation's been providing services to at-risk homeless youth under the age of 18 for the past 40 years in the Pocatello community. We've been providing homeless services to 18- to 22-year-olds in the Pocatello community since 1995. On behalf of the Bannock Youth Foundation, we are in opposition of the appeal that's been presented to you tonight. We have been in partnership with Aid for Friends since 1995 when we developed an apartment living program for the 18- to 22-year-old homeless population in our community. We developed this program in conjunction with SICA and NeighborWorks program, and we continue to provide that program for that population to this date. I here represent a different face of homelessness for our community, 18 and under and 18 to 22. When you think of under 18, we're dealing with kids who are in foster care, which Mr. Freeburn presented earlier to you. And we're also dealing with kids for our community which present to our shelter who are homeless. When we're dealing with our 18- to 22-year-olds, when a kid turns 18, they must leave our shelter at Bannock House. They are no longer able to stay there. And to be considered homeless, they must go stay at the shelter to be eligible for other services within our community. So without Aid for Friends, that just leaves them ineligible for anything else. So when you think of a kid who has turned 18, and many of us have raised children to 18, they're not able to take care of themselves. So this is a much-needed service in our community. Our two agencies, along with many others, serve on our Regional Homeless Coalition to routinely collaborate on issues related to our homelessness in our community. I had a few thoughts. I believe that Aid for Friends Board and their staff put many mindful hours into this process and didn't submit this application without much consideration to our community, the homeless population, or their agency. Having partnered with them for over 25 years myself, I know that whatever difficulties might arise from this decision, that they are more than willing to sit at the table with you and come up with a win-win situation. I know the staff who work there, they're dedicated to making this endeavor successful for all involved. That includes our concerned community members. I want you to know that we have a philosophy at our agency. We worked in a very emotionally...
Jamie, thank you very much.
Mayor, City Council members, my name is Michelle Flower, and I am here on behalf of Family Services Alliance of Southeast Idaho. Family Services Alliance works very closely and partners on a lot of services and referrals with Aid for Friends. So we're here to show our support for their relocation. At Family Services Alliance of Southeast Idaho, we are grateful to you and your ongoing support of victims of intimate partner violence and sexual assault. We appreciate you and your concern for the well-being of Pocatello. This letter is to express my support for Aid for Friends, Family Services Alliance of Southeast Idaho, and Aid for Friends work together on a variety of projects to address housing and homelessness in the Pocatello area. Representatives for both organizations are active members of the Southeastern Idaho Housing and Homeless Coalition, along with many other government, nonprofit, and community partners. Through this coalition, we are able to work toward positive change and meet community needs. Family Services Alliance and Aid for Friends collaborate often to address various concerns of Pocatello citizens, including lack of housing, stability, domestic and sexual violence, and food insecurity. Both Family Services Alliance and Aid for Friends provide emergency shelter to unique populations in the community. Our teams work together to ensure community needs are met while ensuring there is not a duplication of services. Our teams often make cross-referrals and work collaboratively to better serve citizens. This partnership has resulted in positive results for victims of abuse and increased safety and empowerment. Aid for Friends provides invaluable services to Pocatello, and we are pleased to be able to work with this organization on a daily basis.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Diaz, and I am 18-years-old. I am an employee at Aid for Friends. I was hired through ISU to be an off-campus work-study. It is my favorite job that I have had so far. In the time that I have worked at Aid for Friends, I have never felt uncomfortable or unsafe. The only times that I did feel unsafe was at the end of my shift when I had to walk to my car because it was at night. In those instances, I would have a resident that was currently staying there walk me to my car, or watch from the door to make sure that I was safe. Some of the best people that I have met have been at Aid for Friends. They have a strong sense of community and I can't put in words how amazing they are. They give back, and I actually asked one of the residents today what I should say, and she just said that we are committed to giving back as much as we can. And I would also like to state that I have never seen a syringe or fecal matter anywhere near or on the property. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, and City Council. My name is Sparky Jones, and I live at 1527 South Fourth. I was born and raised in Pocatello, and I've lived here all my life. Due to some choices that were out of my control, I ended up homeless for a month, living in my car with three of my children. There was no homeless shelter at that time. I feel it's very important to have a homeless shelter in each community, to help those with a hand up, not a handout. I've been involved with our homeless shelter, Aid for Friends, for a little over three years. What a great opportunity. I've spent three times helping at the encampment to raise money for the Aid for Friends, sleeping in a cardboard box. I thank God that when we were done, I had a nice warm house to go to. I feel everyone should try it. I feel our city is a great one, and I'm very thankful to live here. We are in very much need for a bigger and better shelter. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ann Hunter. I'm a sociologist and former chair of that department at ISU. And I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of the women and children who encounter all the fears and the challenges of being homeless in our community. And I think we'd all do well tonight to let go of stereotypes and to develop the compassion and empathy to walk in the shoes of the mothers, often deserted by their men, their families, and who live each day fearing for the well-being of their children. These children cannot be held accountable for their situation. Our community is known as one that steps up and shows compassion for those in need. Let's do the right thing and approve the facility at 209 East Lewis. And by doing so, we will allow the children to feel safe and to retain their dignity, rather than community rejection. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Bob Gurkey. I live at 2279 Jackman. I'm retired. I've been fortunate to work out at the site and save my money. I am a volunteer with Open Recovery and with the Behavioral Health Board of Region 6. And everything I have seen and heard, I support 100% the, hopefully, new facility for Aid for Friends on 209 Lewis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Adams. I live, work, and play in Old Town. I live on Arthur. I own Pocatello Pet Lodges, both of which are in Old Town and both of which are adjacent to or near the proposed shelter site. I have spent my fair share of time in front of this council advocating for my business to be allowed in certain areas where planning and zoning originally deemed them inappropriate. During those times, it was usually people unwilling to accept me as the expert in my field that refused to hear me out, let alone accept my position. As with pets, where everyone loves pets, but we rarely find someone willing to save them all, Pocatello, I feel, is experiencing a crisis of conscience in regards to our homeless population. Everyone agrees that homelessness in our community is a problem, and in this case, we even agree on the solution: shelters. But we don't agree on the location. And I also say, if not here, where? When will we, as Pocatellans, realize the role we play in our community? We have the power to affect change, and Aid for Friends is that change. They have shown to be willing to take that role, to address that community concern, and they have done so successfully for more than 35 years. I accept them as the expert in their field. I have heard them out, and I accept their position. Homelessness does not necessarily equal criminality. Homelessness requires compassionate citizens to sympathize with those fallen on hard times. And if we are not personally willing to save everyone, we need to rely on those that are dedicated to that end. I do my best to make sure that my business operations, employees, and clients are not subjecting my neighbors to undue hardships or concern. If an issue arises, I resolve it immediately and as completely as I am able. And I believe BJ Stenzlin when she tells me that she can do the same thing for me and my business.
Thank you.
Don Zevi, 465 Barrett, Pocatello. Mayor and City Council, I'm here to clear up a couple of mischaracterizations that were made by those opposed or in favor of the appeal. They use the term quite often about being across the street, and when we think about being across the street, we think of something in front of us. Well, this property is not across the street. It's behind Racine Olson, John Lewis Street. It's behind there, and it's not in the Improvement District. So we need to make that very clear. They talked about being surrounded by bars. Well, they're not surrounded by the bars. The bars are north of this particular situation where this property is located. So they tried to focus it on all the businesses that were there. These businesses are not going to be affected by it. Now, we also talk about economic development. And in economic development, many of those that are in favor of the appeal don't understand economic development. Economic development is smart development. And smart development is doing the things that are right for a community, and not only right for the community, but right for the people that are there. Quite frankly, you talked about all the things and the issues that they were facing. Well, let me point out that in a 90-day period of time, at 504 East Center Street, we had to replace the windows in that facility there that they failed to mention because of those patrons that were in the bars. And we've got the police reports and the records of those that weren't assisted. So quite frankly, and assumptions being made on my part, like many other assumptions, I'm more in fear of those patrons that are in the bars for the people that are in the shelter. And there were a lot of, and perhaps I shouldn't have said that, because there were labels being made of these people. They're not criminals. They're human beings. So I ask to decide on the facts and what's good for our city and not others' emotional prejudices or labels.
Thank you.
Hi, guys. Good evening. My name's Alicia Bailey. I live at... I live at 1300 Camelback View Drive. My husband's a physician at Portniff, and I am the mother of five kids. I am the co-founder of Acorn Fund of Pocatello. Throughout the year, Acorn supplies needed clothing, paperwork, and shoes that allow shelter residents to get back to work. Acorn also organizes Christmas for upwards of 150 homeless members of our community. I've been asked to address my feelings on my safety when I go to the shelter. My children often come with me to the shelter during December on a daily basis. My four-year-old comes with me almost every week. When we arrive, shelter residents offer to open the doors and the gates for us. They help me carry donations. They kindly say hello more than people do at the store. The residents start to become my friends. One proud father came to me with his steel-toed work boots from Acorn to tell me how his newly-acquired job was going to allow him and his family of five kids to move out of the shelter, and I was grateful to have the chance to congratulate him. Acorn hosts a bowling party each year, and this year I was speaking to two mothers, each had a one-month-old baby that were staying in the shelter, and they were excited to tell me that they were going to be able to leave soon because of the shelter programs that helped them become more self-reliant. Sadly, this December, as I was at the shelter often, I had to see two families turned away that could not come into the shelter because there was no space left, as well as several individuals. With the many times I've been to the shelter, I've only been approached and asked for money one time, and that was because the individual thought that Acorn provided rent for people, which we do not do. I have been to the shelter at night, and there have not been people outside. Upon entering, men in the shelter have offered to help me carry my boxes down to my car and help me out. Let's just say I prefer to take my kids to the shelter in the evening to serve than to go with them to a bar or a tattoo parlor. The scariest thing about the shelter is realizing that 60 people are housed in one old, small home with three bathrooms to share. The shelter desperately needs a new building, and they have put a lot of thought into keeping the shelter away from residential areas, away from busy streets, and still close to public transportation so that residents can apply for jobs. I've spoken to nurses at the hospital who cannot release patients from the hospital because there's too many stairs at the homeless shelter, and there's not a very convenient way to get into the shelter without using the stairs. Acorn has attempted to start a dinner and after-school program at Aid for Friends. However, the small, antiquated 1930s kitchen and non-existent common area do not allow for people to serve at the shelter, only to drop off food and donations. Upon seeing the new, large room that they could use in the new shelter, I was excited to think of all the volunteer work that could go on there. I'm grateful that despite living in a rather non-diverse city, my children have the opportunity to step out of their bubble and interact with people outside of their normal circle of friends.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Amy Shelton. I am another founding member of Acorn Fund Pocatello, and we've worked with Aid for Friends for over three years. I provide rides of residents of the shelter in my car to the DMV to get driver's license. Sometimes we go to Walmart to get the clothes that they need in order to obtain that job. These are small obstacles to overcome for employment, and we've seen a lot of success. I've always felt safe. I've always felt comfortable, both inside and outside of the shelter. I've always felt welcome, like Alicia. I am welcomed with a hello. How can I help you? Can I carry something? I often have my three kids and my old mother with me. My kids are 12, 10, and 8, and they go with me often, and I will probably bring them more often to a larger shelter because there'll be more opportunities for them to actually serve. I spent two hours in the small donation room with Virginia, who manages that, and with the two of us, we could barely turn around. So bringing my children would be much more enjoyable for them to have that opportunity. Last summer, I brought my children, my neighbor and her children, and Alicia's children, to have a water fun with the children at the shelter. You can imagine living in a shelter during the summer, there's only so many videos you can watch. And they had a blast. Even tonight, just talking about it, my kids were so excited. And as we pulled away, my 10-year-old daughter, Adeline, said, "Mom, these kids are just like me." And that is an important experience that was so meaningful to my daughter, that she made that connection between herself and the kids living in the shelter. And I think others in this community can have a similar experience in a larger facility with a new shelter. Like Alicia said, the storage room's amazing. The con area, I envisioned Cub Scout groups, school groups, students from National Honor Society being able to come in and do some of the things that we wanted to do, but we just don't have the space to be able to provide those opportunities for people. And the new shelter, I think, provides opportunities for developing these long-term, meaningful relationships between the community and the shelter. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Samuel Vineyard. I live on 718 North 10th Avenue, and I'm the General Manager of Moca Madness on 546 South 3rd Avenue, which is just within two blocks away from where the current Aid for Friends is right now. What I want to do is basically bear my own experience, I guess, with being in such close proximity as well as running a business. I have gained many good friendships, as well as seen transitions happen in a very positive way, where... way, where several people have been able to take advantage of the resources that are provided through Aid for Friends and be able to just get to a position as better for their lives. And in turn, many of them have become clientele of mine at the coffee shop and benefited my business. And it's just a wonderful transition, and I've seen it happen endlessly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Galliford, 9401 West Charlotte. I want to tell you I appreciate the respect that the council and the audience have shared with each other. I was impressed by that at the first meeting. But I own property downtown, and they made light of the Business Improvement District, and they've been paying that bill for 27 years. And many years ago, there was a poorly-run bar downtown that had scarier people than would ever come out of a homeless shelter. But I've been over to the homeless shelter. We took some goodies down there after Christmas, and today, there are 20 kids in there, and in delivering these goods to the homeless shelter. Kids are in and out there. They're just people. I'm impressed with the young lady who spent time there, that we all need to take care of this, and if we don't do it now, and here, kind of when? And I think one thing that surprises me so much is that, I bet you, most of the people in the community don't know where Aid for Friends is because they operate under the radar. They do a great job. We're fortunate to have that kind of organization in Pocatello. And I think this is the next step, and if we don't do it now, when? And where? I mean, this is, the location fits. It's in the area that's in our Sterling Courtyard that says, "This is where they go." Talking about adding, you know, dollar spend in the community, they're going to spend about $1.6 to $2 million in that vocation. There'll be employees, there's people, it's just, I think it's a win-win. And again, I think it's an exceptional organization, and we hope that you support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess I'm last.
We don't know that, but you're up there.
My name is Jolynn Anderson. I am the founder and the director of the Portnife Animal Welfare Society. I've been working with B.J. and the Aid for Friends home over there for about 20 years because when they have an issue with someone who comes in with a dog, or a cat, or a rabbit, or whatever, and they need food, or they need medical attention, and so on, they call us. And I've been over there on numerous occasions, helping with the animals or delivering food. I have never had any trouble with any of the residents in the home, and they're all very, very grateful, and they're very kind and very giving and very helpful. And I've transported many of them to our veterinarians community and never had an issue. Couple of things I wanted to say, that, you know, they talk about how scary this, the people are in this historical downtown area. If you remember, I think up and down Center Street, and this recently, in the last year or so, we have had, how many deaths? Wasn't there some fellow beat in the alley? Bob Thompson years ago was killed down there on the corner of Second, Third, Second and Center. So we can't blame that on the homeless shelter. I'm in support of putting the Aid for Friends in this new area. I think it's the right thing to do. And I just want to remind all of you, you're going to all go home tonight to your warm beds, and you're going to get up tomorrow morning to your cup of coffee in your warm home, and you're going to go to work. There but for the grace of God go you or I. These people, all of them aren't drug addicts, and they're all aren't people that are in mental issues. They're people that are just down on their luck, and they need a hand up. So please, let's put the shelter where it belongs. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for B.J.
Okay, why don't you wait a few minutes before you do that, because you'll have an opportunity to come up and visit.
Is she up?
Yeah, she'll be back up. Is there any others opposed to the application?
To the appeal.
The appeal. My bad. Any others opposed to the appeal?
That's right.
It looks like Jolynn was right. She is the last one. Then we will give an opportunity to the applicant, which is B.J.
I'm Scott Heide, and I'm going to take the rebuttal. If that's agreeable with the council.
Okay. I, I don't know what, all right. It's up to B.J. B.J.'s the one listed, so. Is that okay with you? You had a question for B.J.
Well, I have, I have a question.
But I don't want people back and forth.
Yeah. The question, I didn't realize how much more expansive this was going to be. I mean, you see it in numbers, but it's been reiterated and reiterated. Do you think that that's going to de-escalate some of the issues that police have been called on by getting people spread out and not being in such close quarters?
I'm Scott Heide. I'm the chairman of the board, and I'm an attorney, and I'm going to do my best to be incredibly brief on that. Absolutely. What we've heard, what we heard about the criminally alleged toast butterer, I believe that if we had a larger facility, we wouldn't have the tension and the stress. And Mr. Bray, this is exactly, I think, what your concern is, is that with a larger facility, not only are we going to be able to de-escalate many more of those type of situations, we're also going to be compatible and help the businessmen of this community meet the goals that they were talking about. Does that answer your question?
Okay, you got, your rebuttal had already started, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Well, let me start where I should have started. Mayor and council, it's a pleasure to be before you, and appreciate you taking the time to consider this issue. I wanted to start by saying that we, at Aid for Friends, we do not oppose the businesses. We appreciate the businesses, and we will support them, and think that they're in the right place. And where we are and where we will be, we will continue to be compatible with their business goals and help the community of Pocatello arrive at these economic goals and the compatibility that's been spoke of this evening. Aid for Friends at its current facility is at the end of its useful life. We've heard that over and over again, and Aid for Friends is at a point where we need to expand. We are incredibly appreciative of the fact that Idaho Housing and Finance has come along, and this council is aware of the matching funds that they've agreed to put forth in this particular project. We are at a point where we have an incredible opportunity and are incredibly thankful to you all, all of those here, all of the businesses that will help accomplish this goal. The time is right. We've heard a lot this evening about fear. Not too long ago, I had a dream, and in this dream, I had many scary obstacles to overcome. Instead of turning this into a psychoanalysis session, I'll just share with you. At one point in this dream, I approached a cliff, and then at this cliff, all these folks with me had to jump off this cliff. And it was a long, long ways down, and I was scared, and I was fearful. And I stepped back from the cliff. And when I stepped back from the cliff, I took a moment to think about the situation and how I was going to handle the situation, gather my thoughts, gather my spirit, if you will, and then I re-approached the cliff. And when I looked down this time, it was only a matter of inches to the bottom. The point I'm trying to make here is that we've heard much about fear. But if we take the time and we take the effort, we can overcome that fear, and we can make this community better, and Aid for Friends' new shelter is part of that. I understand, being a lawyer, the applicable arguments, and there have been those in front of me that have made better argument on the legal process here. But I would point out that the appeal notes two areas, and that is economic development and compatibility. And we've heard over and over again today how this new shelter is going to meet those We've also heard about scary people in our community. I believe one of, one of the councilmen over here asked about the lawyers getting people off. Well, I'm here before you as a criminal defense lawyer, and your city attorney can, can confirm that I am that guy who gets the DUI drivers off, the, the other alcohol-related incident people off, and the drug users. And what I would tell you is that these are not the homeless. These are the employed that have money either from their work or from some other source. They are not the homeless. Now, they may end up homeless after they pay my bill. But Aid for Friends is there to help them through that process also, and that's why I support Aid for Friends as strongly as I do. Well, I make light a little bit. But as an expert, I will tell you that the vast majority of criminal cases that I deal with are DUIs and drug and alcohol-related offenses that are not being committed by the homeless. In closing, if you've ever been homeless, even for a night or two, you don't have to raise your hand, simply hold your head high. It's not a fault, it's not a flaw, it's simply an obstacle that many already have or in the future will have to overcome. But I want you to know that Aid for Friends is the gem for you, and we will be here for that situation. Mayor, council, thank you, and God bless.
Thank you. Then we would have a rebuttal by the appellant.
Now.
It's been a while since I was up here. I remind you that I am Fred Lewis here on behalf of Gypsy Lions and also Hanson Janitorial. This application tugs at the heartstrings, doesn't it? It just, it really does. There is, and we 100% understand the emotional appeal of this application. We understand that. And remember, we are not critical of Aid for Friends. We applaud their hard work, and we applaud everyone that supported them here today. We're, we're not saying that they shouldn't be able to go anywhere in the city, they shouldn't have a homeless shelter anywhere. We are not saying that. We're not saying that homeless people are bad people. We, but there, however, there are some that face challenges with drug and alcohol and mental illness. That's, we've given you testimony, and I hope that you'll remember what Bruce Hanson talked about, about the problems that he's experienced with his business, the homeless shelter in Boise. I mean, these are real facts, and they're consistent with, with every city who tries to put a homeless shelter near the retail business district. They just, they just don't work. They're mutually incompatible. Now, in the application that was filed by Aid for Friends, there are five other locations on McKinley, on South 5th, on Pole Line, out on West Chubbick. There's, there's other locations where this homeless shelter could be placed that's away from this Business Improvement District, this really special part of Pocatello. Now, remember that Old Town is successful because of the partnership between the city, between Old Town, Inc., and between the local business owners. Now, the zoning laws are there to protect, are there to protect those business owners that have invested millions and millions of dollars, and the hard work, 27 years of work of Old Town, Inc. has put into this Business Improvement District. There's a lot of momentum. These, these local business owners are the partner with the city to make Pocatello the great place that it is, and the reason why I've stayed here for 30 years, moved here, and I love this place. There's art walks, there's tree to tree, there's all kinds of outdoor activities in this walkable retail business district. You have a really important choice here tonight. Really is an important choice. You have a large homeless shelter, four times the size that they currently operate approximately. And on the other, so that's on the one hand. On the other hand, you have this incredibly successful Business Improvement District. That's, that's the choice that you have laid before you. These two cannot coexist. We have shown you in city after city after city, it doesn't work. The homeless shelter in downtown Salt Lake is closing down. It doesn't work. If you've ever been past Pioneer Park, you know what goes on there. So we really believe that you have to make that choice here today, or whenever you're going to make this decision, because a vote for the homeless shelter in this particular location is a vote against Old Town. We really believe that. And we wouldn't say that if we didn't have the facts to support our position, which we have submitted to you. The, what we would like to see is Old Town continue its success. Be that magnet that draws in new businesses. Be that beautiful place. Be that gem that has been developed by this partnership between the city and between Old Town, Inc. and the local business owners. Please continue that, this success. There's all kinds of other locations. This is not a zero-sum game. There's other locations where they can go and develop their, the homeless shelter, Aid for Friends. Everybody can be happy. This is not an either-or. There's still going to be room for the homeless shelter, and it's still room, and still homes for the homeless. Thank you.
Thank you.
A question.
Yes.
I was closed.
Okay. I was gonna, gonna see what we needed to do. They have a question for that audience, so, and we have it closed. Can they consider the answer?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll be part of the operations, but the public hearing is sufficient. It should be closed.
Okay. I declare, I declare the public hearing closed. Council, this side is before you. How do you wish to proceed?
He wants to ask a question.
He wants to ask a question.
B.J., would you tell me what those six locations are that Mr. Lewis referred to?
Certainly, I'd be glad to. When we did the feasibility study, we wanted to look at different areas that were commercial general or around the area. At the time, what buildings would possibly fit? None of them have we, except for this one, have we put down a financial commitment. So we did that to check walkability, to see how close they were to other amenities. Those were the things I needed to demonstrate for the HUD funding and for ongoing HUD funding with a shelter. So I drove around and picked a spot and looked at it, tried to see if it was, if it was in a commercial general, it was still on the list. There were some that were like Bonneville School. It went off the list because it was in a residential. There were some... There were some, like the one on McKinley, while it is commercial general, immediately across the street and down the alley, all of that is residential.
On McKinley, would it be like the Jolay Plaza?
That's exactly the place. Yes. So, we looked at that. How does it fit with our needs? How are we going to get it close to the services that people need and accessibility, walkability close to PRT? But, you know, all of those had something like the neighborhood very close. It's hard to find a commercial general that doesn't have businesses or that's not close to residential. And actually, this property is as far, I don't know if anyone's really mentioned, the Union Pacific's our biggest neighbor. But it is. So, one whole side of our building is next to Union Pacific and as far away as it can be from residential areas.
Okay, McKinley, I've got two. What are the others that you looked at? Monaville is out. McKinley is out.
I looked at a place in Chubbick, it was a Catholic church surrounded by residential, even though it was commercial general. Gosh, I know I've got it someplace in my.
Farmers Insurance.
Farmer, I've got a group to help me. Farmers Insurance way south of town, it was too large. But at one time, there were some discussions about potential common use, so we wanted to look at that. But it didn't meet very well with the criteria I needed to show with HUD. Anyplace else?
We got four of the six, so there's two more.
Louis is one.
Louis? I, I have it probably in my documents, I can't remember the last.
Here's your application.
Oh, thank you. But now I don't have my reading glasses. Okay. Oh, they're too, they're pretty bad, sir. How about Garrett Way? That was the other one. And that one, I was really concerned because of the lack of pedestrian sidewalks.
What on Garrett Way?
What?
What on Garrett Way? I know real estate.
Okay. I went and picked a location that was for rent that was closer to another place I really had in mind, but I didn't want to publish that it was because it was being considered for another potential use and it was hush. So, I put down 2223 Garrett Way and there is a location there. It was a vacant office or retail store. Actually, I appreciate this. I couldn't have done it without you. Okay, so those.
The mall was 1800. Steve?
It is. The Westwood Mall's 1800 Garrett Way.
Yeah. So, what would 22 be?
Garrett Way.
By the Chevy, old Chevy dealership.
There was a place on Garrett that had several individual buildings.
Oh.
Oh. Yeah. So, there was.
There was Subway and.
I have where the Sears Home store is.
And all that.
Okay.
Okay. So, while I did this, it was a feasibility study, it was the initial review of what was available, what was possible here in Pocatello. None of those panned out to be the best. And this location that we have now, you can imagine some of the other buildings, they just don't compare. We were able to get a very, working with realtors, they were able to have the owners provide a donation. So, it's an affordable piece of property for us so that we can do the rehab, which is gonna cost more.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And thank you.
Very generous on your part, counselor.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I just have, it's not a question, it's more a comment, but I'm troubled by Mr. Lewis's comment. I'm gonna get it right here, but that a vote for the shelter is a vote against Old Town. I know, I mean, speaking for myself and I'm sure other council members will agree to me, I'm very, very supportive of Old Town-Pocatello and one of the main reasons that I even ran for this position was because I wanted to see Old Town-Pocatello be all that it could be and, and I support that revitalization, I support the businesses, I support the momentum that you talked about, but I also recognize that we have a need for a homeless shelter. And to me, you said yourself that it doesn't have to be either or, but that statement makes it either or. If I support homeless, I'm opposed to Old Town, that, that's a real troubling statement to me. So, I, I support both.
Can I respond to that?
Only if you're.
Only if she asks it.
She asked her question. This is kind of counsel's time to deliberate, so.
I don't really have a question.
Kind of waiting for the deliberation.
When we had the hearing in December, one of the things I said is that homelessness is an issue that we have to face and we can't run away from it. And, and I can just see, we can spend another couple of years trying to get the perfect place and when that place is decided by one committee, there'll be another committee that says, no, it doesn't work here. That's happened a couple of times already to another entity. I really think we need to move ahead and I think there were comments tonight about people that are ready to help get this done with another committee studying. I think there's a group that's, that could use that help. I, I feel like Aid for Friends is our first installment on homelessness. I don't know if it's our last one. And quite frankly, I, I don't want to be a Pollyanna and think that we can do it better in Pocatello than other places that are failing, but I know there's some places having some success too. Some of the places that have failed is because it became too expensive for them to stay where they were in some of the major cities. I don't know that Fort Worth, which was in our docket, is a great example. I'm a TCU graduate, so I have some experience in Fort Worth. There were areas of Fort Worth that were already declining way back when I was there and, and it's also a city that's about 14, 15 times the size of Pocatello, which is a greater concentration. So, I really think we gotta move the yardstick tonight and get some stuff done.
Mr. Mayor, one other question. Is the homeless coalition organization still functioning?
Yes.
Yes.
Very active.
You meet how often?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, okay.
Yes, they are.
Okay, that's.
They meet quarterly.
Mr. Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move that we reaffirm the hearing officer's recommendation and deny the appeal.
Second.
Okay, everybody relax for a second. I've gotta get to my paper that I can't read anything anyway. And who is the second?
Bina.
No, Bina was.
Bina one. All right.
Between my little.
Okay. So, we have a motion by President Johnston and a second by Manon. Are you clear on what the motion was? Is there any other discussion, council?
A yes is a no to this.
No, don't start confusing things real quick. Okay. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Johnston?
Yes.
Manon?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. I, before, oh, wait, 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 don't, don't, we don't need any of that mess, I'm not done yet. I want to thank you very mu, yeah, I'm looking at my thing too. I said it would be 10 o'clock before we were done, it's 10:03. Turning my thing here, so I was wrong. But I want to thank everybody for your professionalism and for your respect of others and for listening to the testimonies on both sides. It's always nice to be able to say that here in Pocatello, we can have a dispute and people can get together and come together, disagree and stay civil. And I really do appreciate that from the community as a whole, so thank you very much.
I have one comment. This is when I get admonished.
You get a comment?
I get admonished.
Okay, go ahead, do your thing, whatever you do.
One of the things I think this hearing showed is that no homeless organization is perfect. It has, it has to be growing and changing and evolving. And I think that the decision here tonight makes it imperative that Aid for Friends work with the community they're in and that they have good conversations about solutions to whatever perceptions are, whatever realities are. And I just, I, that's an admonishment I think that has to go after because all of us are concerned about Old Town, we're all concerned about the homeless, we know we have to meet that obligation, that need, but at the same time, neither one can succeed without the cooperation of the other. And I just, that's an admonishment that I want to make because I think it's first upon Aid for Friends because they're the one moving in to work at that and get some, things moving in that neighborhood. That's all. You're done? I'm done.
It's 10:05 now, he took two minutes. No, I do want to thank you. Thank you very much for your patience and for being as civil as you have been. It has been a long night. Thank you for being here, we are adjourned.